Good evening and welcome to the July twenty first, two thousand and twenty five meeting, the Borough of Delmar Planning Board. Please join the board and the play with the ladies. The play for ladies is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If a vote call please.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Blasio.
Here.
Mr. Linding.
Here.
Mr. Fierro.
Here.
Mr. Scherken.
Here.
And Tom Smith Lewis and Mr. Wobbin.
Thank you. Doug Workshop, please.
Yes, the first application we have this evening is basically minor change in use and request a waiver to give us full site plan. We need to call that we had this person before saying behavioral routine. This was approved by us, the individual at that point in time, displaying the original potential ability to expand its capacity back in June of twenty-two. They're now here for expansion. This is a CBD two zone. What they want to do is they want for the coffee bar. Our site plan advisory committee report, June twenty-sixth was submitted. They don't appear to have any significant difficulties with it, but we do want to get some details on record this evening. As I say, it's a minor application, the requesting permission not to have to put in a full penalty of a slight plan. But the kinds of things I think you want to have interest to this evening. To have a schematic, it's a hand drawing, you want to get some idea of dimensions, I would say, of the coffee bar facility. That's how it's being identified. In the application, though, it doesn't limit it to coffee, and I think that's just good learning on their part, they'd say beverages. But you want to check to find out what exactly is being served, are there going to be additional refrigeration units? Is there going to be additional areas to store product? It's just being just a beverage, the food to be served there. That would all be a permitted use, but you just want to get an idea. We have had some issues before, approved one facility. One comes to mind down at the Ocean where suddenly there's a whole load of business inside that we didn't know about, operated by a separate independent person. I don't think that's what we want here. I think what this was, was initially this was being used to serve patrons in there, and now they'd like to make it formal. Will there be additional seating? Hours of operation? Little heat, little coffee bar, everything operating independently of one another. I think you only need to identify that because I think it's just for the age of routine to use and operate then. That's one hours lot of operation. There may possibly only be greater or more times for the coffee. You want to have an idea of that impacts your traffic, that impacts your parking, those types of things. Will there be any additional signage? Any additional employees? Other than the coffee or beverage, will there be any other food preparation on site? What does the owner anticipate by way of additional trash or recycling? Are there going to be servers? I don't know. I don't think that's what's going on here, but you want to at least have that locked in. Is there any proposal to serve beverage outside? That's the original. Probably if you do that and that's okay with you, that would be a permitting function that's outside. Also, get an idea of what the parking is like. Even though this is the CBD two zone, they still need to be some parking departments to get an idea of what is needed about the area, to two hundred square feet or one per seat. There's no single one, an idea of what the parking needs to have on this location. The location in this instance is twelve oh two Main Street, fairly straightforward. I think you just want to have some information on the record as to the scope of this new addition. The other matters before you. Any questions? The other matters before you. This is our first application in the new, what I refer to as the new areas that we've been looking at. This is sub park H. This is the D and R Urban Review LLC. It has been extensively examined by both our planner and engineer. This is basically for eight hundred, eight hundred ten and nine, ten River Roads, block eighty-seven, blocks one, two, and three. They propose, this is the larger building, the motor lodge, another facility there. My understanding is to propose some rigs, all the buildings there, demo those, and then put in the building, it's a four-story building, they're putting in one hundred and ninety units. Some of those are going to be affordable, I'll get to the details of that. It is permitted use, as you know, by way of the amendments that we made to our zone plan and zoning ordinances. In addition to residential facilities, there's many buildings for the residents that have particular site, two big club rooms, pool, trash facilities on site, a residential listing office on the first floor, covered parking spaces on the first level, I would have to tell you that. And we're also identifying some off-site parking spaces and thirty-six spaces along West Railroad Avenue. At this point in time, from the view of the materials we have, our engineer and planner have called out some things. I think it's probably best that we give the latest reviews from them, have the applicant make their presentation, ten billion point by point on those two applications, make sure we cover.
I was going to say yes, Doug, I'd love to do that.
There are, there's some design waivers that they're seeing. This is why utility and shade, three people, at least technically with both sides of the street, not ready to be doing that. I want to have some discussion about that and want to have some information from our planner, our engineers, whether or not that's a good idea. Parking areas and utilities, generally they should be screened, but I think you have testimony that in this instance, it's not an outside facility. Most of the trash areas are all inside the building, so screening, that's a necessity. So let the applicant make their application, which is part of that. I did note that there were some monitoring wells that are still on site, so we'll give a little bit of information about that. I didn't see much of that addressed. The planner or the engineer will make sure that they're ongoing to do something that people have access to those things. They're also requesting some waivers for, they still listen to pay rent, not doing pay rent, but I understand they're working to do payers, but they're supporting this, so they don't want to do payers, they want to do sort of a colorized concrete, I want to find out about that. There's also signage details proposing two signs that are not conforming to the requirements. You're going to call me Nick? Sorry?
We'll take that, you'll get that at the end of the term. Okay, so I want to get some signage details. Let me discuss very briefly, though, the jurisdiction you have. As you know, we went through these extensively with regard to the amendments to our zone plan, our zoning ordinance, certain opportunities. These are largely designed or largely pre-designed, if you will, by way of most of the bulk high tier. To the extent that they're asking for waivers, to the extent that they're asking for variances, that doesn't mean that they don't have to meet those standards. The settlement agreement specifically says that, and I think it was envisioned, if you will, this is my opinion, their counsel may disagree with my opinion, with regard to those things. But with regard to, say, signage, it was clear that in the settlement agreement, the parties identified that, you know, this hasn't been engineered yet, we haven't designed it yet, we haven't idea what the scope of this is going to be, but we haven't, you know, fleshed it out. And so the judge and the parties recognized that there may be any variance in waivers. They specifically say that you apply those variances, waivers under the MLU, so specifically referenced. That the different issue here, as I review it, is that in this instance, where a design standard or variance isn't granted, the applicant has obviously the usual option of taking an appeal, that our decision was ruled that they met their standards, but they also have an option of going back to mayor and council and saying, to the extent that we don't meet these, we'd like you to revise your ordinances so that we are conforming. Now, I will leave it to you as to what the rationale about that was. I think that is something we want to talk to the applicant about, as to say something like, I see the impossibility of your engineering, or, you know, we didn't realize this and those kinds of things, but hold until their standards with regards to colorized papers will not have the difference, why they don't want to do that, hold until the standards with regards to signage. Realize that this site, as I'm sure you understand, it's unique for Delmar. You have Route thirty-five side, which is sort of a frontage, if you will. You have the other side along the road, which is really another frontage for the town, and pretty much you've almost got four sides, which are all front sides, if you will. So you want to take a look at some of the design here at the application. I know your facility is popular, but I don't think most of the people are here for Hazel Boutique. I think we want to be conscious of the applicant's time, number one, this evening, but also we wanted to make sure that we can have some hard stops, so we can hear from the public for some of this application. I think that covered pretty much what I need to address. By way of workshop, we'll get into it, we'll mark a bunch of exhibits, and then I expect both here from the applicant and that, we'll square in orbit, or send them away all at once. Any questions?
No, any questions, anyone? So in terms of a hard stop you had mentioned, I want to let the applicants know, hard stop is nine-thirty, we're going to open it to the public at nine-thirty, so let's plan on All right.
I think that's, I think that's fine. I'm not trying to burden the applicant, I know they have a lot of professionals here, but the clock is ticking on those things.
What about nine-thirty, Wilson?
I think it may benefit them to hear comments from the public. If they, if they're not through with their application, they may be through with their application.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the June sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five meeting?
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ciproni?
Yes.
Mr. Blasio?
Yes.
Mr. Linding?
Yes.
Mr. Fierro?
Yes.
Mr. Scherken?
Yes.
Or Mr. Pusco?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our first application, as Doug had mentioned, is that from Jenna Campfield at Hazel Boutique.
I'm going to square it down. So we square the testimony before the court of law, the truth, I hope you understand the truth. Okay. Just spell your last name for the record before you start testifying. Do you have anything to tell the marksman?
Please.
I'm going to mark the application, and the checklist is A-one. Going to mark the board plan, the hand drawing, hand drawing, not drawn to scale, is not clear to have a date on it, if you'd like, I'd like to see. We'll mark that as A-two, and then we want to mark as PB-one, the site plan advisory committee report, June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Do you have any other exhibits you'd like to refer to, or you think you might refer to here?
That's it, Mr. Meyer.
Okay.
Where's your?
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for being here now, as a partner of the law firm, so I'm doing Ask Chris in New Jersey, appearing on behalf of Jenna Campfield, the applicant, the owner of Hazel Boutique. Property is located at twelve oh two Main Street, block one two five, block nine. Property is located in CBD two zone. This is an application for a change in use. Jenna was previously before the board on June of twenty-twenty-two, just a little over three years ago. And some of you may recall at that time, Jenna converted the old barber shop to retail, and that retail use continues today at the center. Jen is now seeking to continue that retail use and add a coffee bar to the store. Might seem like a unique application, adding coffee to a retail clothing store, but this trend is actually becoming quite common in the retail world. And we want to start by clarifying, this is not a full-blown coffee shop at any point in time. It's not a company owned us, it's not a Starbucks. The coffee accompanies the shopping experience for customers who are in, there won't be any foods served or prepared, they're not going to be any seating inside the tables, so it's not becoming what one would think of when you think of a coffee shop or a coffee store. Again, it's more of an add-on to enhance the customer's experience while shopping. Not going to be any exterior changes, nothing being added to the outside, no improvements are proposed on the exterior. So I'd like to start with having Jenna introduce Hazel Boutique to the board, and to also discuss the success that she and Hazel Boutique has had in Delmar, since she started this business as a small business owner in twenty-fourteen. And then we'll get into specific details with the new coffee bar. So Jenna's been sworn in.
Yes.
There you go. Jenna, for those of us who are not familiar with Hazel Boutique, please, what is Hazel Boutique?
So I opened boutique eleven years ago with the intent to make girls feel more comfortable shopping, that was one big concern. And now I just want it to be more of a safe place for girls to also shop and get coffee as well.
And I understand since you started back in twenty-fourteen, that you've actually opened up new locations as well in addition to Delmar?
I have, yes.
And where are those locations?
Ramsey, New Jersey, La Valette, New Jersey, and Morgan Dyson, New Jersey.
And so, referring to the new coffee bar that's being proposed this evening, just a couple of things I'd like to confirm with you for the record, and you heard Mr. Coats earlier go over some of these items. So no food will be prepared or served on site, is that correct? And as far as deliveries of product to the store, how is your coffee and the milk and the other accessories going to be delivered to the store?
So I do have a warehouse, South Street in Lake Como, where basically all of our deliveries do go to, and then I bring the water myself every day.
Great, so it won't be a truck or an eighteen-wheeler bringing this material?
It's an occasional UPS or a bus, but maybe once a week it's a half.
Great. And just to confirm, you're not proposing any inside or outside seating for the coffee bar?
No.
And you don't currently have any seating in the store?
No.
How is trash handled in your store right now?
We do have trash cans located in the back of both stores that I do have, and my landlord has agreed to have a dumpster also put in the back just for us.
Just to switch gears for a second, for signage, you have exterior signage right now. You're not proposing to modify or change the signage tonight as part of this application? Let's talk about employees. Right now, how do the employee feel during the given shift?
In the summer, I have five.
And this is your peak season, so five would be the maximum number of employees you would have?
Yes.
Okay, and in the winter time, what does that go down to?
It depends, two to three per day.
And if the board were to approve the application tonight and you were to open up the coffee bar, would the number of employees during a given shift change for the new coffee bar?
Yes.
So you would have the same number of employees that you currently have there today? Let's talk about hours of operation. So right now, I heard then you're open at Delmar location from eleven AM to six PM?
Yes.
And if the board were to approve the application this evening, what would you be seeking to modify your hours of operation today?
Nine to four PM for coffee and stay open eleven to six for the store.
So you're not going to be open for the five, six, seven, eight AM coffee? Is there any self-serve, or will the coffee be served by your employees?
There is no self-serve.
And I want to just focus on parking. Now, I know you've been at the site since two thousand and fourteen, and then in twenty-twenty-two, like we discussed earlier, you expanded Hazel Boutique by taking over the old barber shop and converting that to what is now the Hazel Home, which sells the home to court. Have you had any issues with parking since twenty-fourteen and since you've taken over the Hazel Home and the old barber shop?
I don't know.
And can you please describe to the board, in addition to the parking that might be reserved for you as the rear of your property, where else is parking available in this area of Delmar where your store is located?
So I'm across the street from the park, so I do have all of the parking around that area as well, which is pretty where my employees park everything. I do have the school parking in the summer, which is the busy time, but I've never had an entry with parking at all, and I do have three spots in the back of my store for my employees to park.
In your experience, I know you've been operating at the site for about eleven years now, what's the average amount of time that a customer parks, comes into the store, pays for their merchandise at those times?
I would say about fifteen to thirty minutes, say, with that.
That'll conclude our direct testimony for Ms. Campfield.
Let me ask a couple of questions. Any other beverages besides coffee?
I would like to serve matcha, lattes, and iced tea.
Anything beyond that?
No.
And you mentioned nine to four for coffee. Are you going to open the store at nine now?
No.
So it's just for people to come into your store and have coffee?
Yes.
You're not selling any of the goods that would normally be on sale? I guess you open it, the store fully at eleven?
Yes. We do that in La Valette right now. Our coffee shop opens at nine, and the store opens at ten, and we don't sell anything other than coffee and lattes.
No service, right? Same number of employees?
It's just more car.
And you would need to get health department approval, correct?
Yes.
And that's the condition of the application?
I've been speaking to them, and I also want to prehook myself to talk to them.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that requirement?
Yes.
For any other questions? Any questions?
Can you give an idea of size of these things? There's a counter existing but recently expanded. Can you give us an idea of the dimensions of that counter?
I would say it's about six feet long.
And are you have new sinks across the back?
You mentioned new dumpsters coming from your landlord. Typically, when we see a lot of communications, there's dumpster locations, some places unserviced. Do you know, is it on, in your back parking lot area that's dedicated to your building?
Yeah, so most likely I would take one of my parking spots that are back there, and I would use it as the dumpster spot.
And is your parking area shared with other stores in that strip?
Just one, the salon next to me. But I did take, I have three spots actually, my store is technically two sinks, and then barber shop, salon, and those three spots, and she has one.
And is that area relatively concealed from the neighbors?
Yes.
That parking area?
It backs actually to Autobody, and they're not there anymore.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public for comment. If you'd like to make a comment about this application, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your screen address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion and ask for a motion on this application.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ciproni?
Yes.
Mr. Blasio?
Yes.
Mr. Scherken?
Yes.
Mr. Fierro?
Yes.
Mr. Scherken?
Yes.
Or Mr. Pusco?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you want to make another application?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Oh, that's a good resolution. Yes, so we did prepare a resolution for adoption this evening, and the board acted favorably on the application. I'll get right to the point. Jenna is trying to start this as soon as possible to capture the remaining summer season, as most businesses in Delmar are. So our request to the board would be if it's acceptable to the board to consider adoption of the resolution this evening. I have made my client aware of the risks involved in doing so, forty-five day guilt period, and will look at stipulated record. In the event the board is unable to adopt the resolution this evening, we would just ask for some type of permission to allow Jenna to move forward with finishing her permits with the building department, and if the board would be willing to allow her to start the, start selling coffee at the store, which would occur prior to the adoption of the resolution.
I will say, I spoke to counsel about this, I explained that we have a number of outstanding questions. We would not have the room to memorialize the decision this evening. We anticipate some, but not all of it, all of the testimony. I told him that, you know, I will, and I will tell the board, I have no objection if the board were to say no, and write that the applicant's permission proceed, they are obviously at risk and won't be memorializing the formal resolution, let's say, next month. But if the applicant understands that they can go forward, they can make those recommendations without pardon, make this recommendation, and also I can decline that with the board's permission to allow this person to catch a portion of the summer, recognizing that the summer season's thirteen weeks, but I leave that to the board.
Any concerns with, obviously the resolution can't be adopted tonight, but I'm not concerned with allowing this applicant to move forward with the understanding of reverse association with the waiting for the authorization, so.
I do agree. I'm just, you will do a board's vote. Please follow up, please.
Aye.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will still try to expedite something, actually.
Yes, thank you. All right, well, good night. All right, thank you very much. The next application is that of the N R Urban Review LLC, eight hundred, eight ten, and nine ten River Road, Major Site.
Okay. Take care.
You're welcome.
Anybody to testify on this? If you testify, might have something to say on it. Have a quick report, just a second. Yeah, I want to bring you all up. Bring you all up, square you in. Some square the testimony before the board, the truth, the truth, not the truth. Same instructions to everybody, before you start testifying, state your names loudly and clearly, spell your name, purposes and effect, so they will be able to track the evidence and stuff. Talking, excuse me, not me. Follow directions to your counsel, counsel, new official, and the marksman, and so if we can just wait for the court to get it set, so she can go off. No pressure now, we're all watching.
For the members of the public, there will be a presentation on the screen, so you'll be able to see a lot of what's being presented, not just on boards, but we're selling the screen over our head.
Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to, and counsel, new official, I'd like to mark the following exhibits. A-one, the Borough of Delmar Development Application, dated April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. A-two will be the submission letter prepared by Mark Diverman, the pest fire, dated April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. A-three will be the stormwater management drainage report analysis prepared by Matthew Hirsch of Dynamic Engineering.
What was that again, I'm sorry? Stormwater, A-four?
State stormwater management drainage analysis, and we'll be helping you. That's, that's A-three. And that was last revised June twenty-twenty-five. Environmental impact statement prepared by Dynamic Engineering, last revised April A-five is going to be the stormwater management operation and maintenance manual, last revised June twenty-twenty-five. A-six will be the supplemental stormwater, it's supposed to be basin, there's that pain area. Investigation report prepared by, again, Dynamic Earth, Dustin Richardson of Anne Frances Van Kleen of Dynamic Earth, dated February seventeenth. Dustin Richardson of Anne Frances Van Kleen of Dynamic Earth, dated February seventh, twenty twenty five. A seven, together with the Journals to Work Model. Traffic Impact Study Prepared by Dynamic Traffic, dated, well, last revised July eleventh, twenty twenty five. These two documents seem to be separate. Piecing that together is A seven, the Journals to Work. A eight, preliminary and final site plan. Dynamic Engineering, that revised July tenth, twenty twenty five. A nine, architectural plans consisting of six sheets, prepared by Rockline and Lake, dated February seventh, twenty twenty five. A ten, landscape plan consisting of seven sheets, prepared by Countess P. Bauer, Melon Bauer, and Department Landscape Architecture, last revised July eleven, twenty twenty five. A eleven, existing impervious coverage, consisting of one sheet, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated July tenth, twenty twenty five. A twelve, posed impervious coverage, consisting of one sheet, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated July tenth, twenty twenty five. A fourteen, sanitary sewer and portable water engineering report, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated May twenty twenty five.
That was A fourteen? Last one was that?
I think that's A fourteen. I'll figure out what I did with A fifteen. A fifteen, submission letter by Dynamic Engineering, consisting of, December twenty one, twenty three. Email from Matthew Sheeran of DEP and the MC Development, I'm sorry, Knott County Development Review Committee, letter of three twenty five, twenty twenty five. A sixteen, listed variants and waivers. A seventeen, three images of photographic renderings of the finished elevations. We're going to mark PB one, Borough Engineering Report, with the signature of Mr. Norris, of June fourth, twenty twenty five. PB two, Borough Planner Report, with the signature of Christine Bell, July second, twenty twenty five. PB three, Borough Planner's Report of July seventeenth, with the signature of Kristin Bell. PB four, Delmar Shady Treat Commission Report, of July seventh, twenty twenty five. PB five, TBRC Report, of July seventh, twenty twenty five. PB six, we'll mark the settlement agreement between the Borough and DNR, July twelfth, twenty twenty five. PB seven, redevelopment agreement between the Borough and DNR, July seventeenth, twenty twenty five. PB eight, we'll mark separately Exhibit I, this is an exhibit of the redevelopment agreement project schedule. We'll have to come up with course when we review that. PB nine, Borough Engineer Update, the unit of citizens, of course, July first, twenty first, twenty five. That is of the exhibits. Any other exhibits, counsel? You're up for the A exhibit, you're at A seventeen.
I think we may have some additional areas to update.
Do you wanna mark those now, or do you wanna wait till we get? Okay, so just your next exhibit marked means it's gonna be A eighteen. We're having you mark those, date those as we go along. Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the warm up, Mr. Prud. For the record, my name is Mark Deman. I'm the attorney of the police at Shanani and Jeanne Fomasi. I represent the applicant. This evening, I'm going to try to move this expeditiously, a lot of children to be thrilled. I'm sure you've all taken time to be thrilled exhaustively. We had a very productive meeting with the new committee. We made divisions to plan. I'm very pleased to be here. I think this is a really great project for the community. It's an ideal location for a project of the size and scale. Just by my background, property is approximately three point one three acres. It's at the intersection of West Harley Line and West Roswell Avenue, Southern Line, Eighth Avenue, East Line, River Road, Street eighty thirty five, and North Line, Ninth Avenue. Properties of Marina Commercial Winding Zone in the Seaport Brooklyn area. Presently case three, existing businesses, the Delmar Motor Lodge, the New Village Pavilion, the Foxview Pavilion, there's a pool, parking lot. I'm sure you've all dropped by very regularly. We're seeking preliminary final major site plan for the structure, multi-family development, hundred ninety eight units, amenities, rooftop amenities, club, chit room, and pool. It's floors two to four, oval parking, residential leasing space. We uncovered parkings, open parkings, a total of a hundred ninety eight units. Ninety seven one bedroom, seventy nine two bedroom, twenty two three bedroom of these units, hundred seventy eight working units, twenty units are affordable. I'm sure you're all familiar with the details, especially the numbers we've got flying out here. All the details set forth in the settlement agreement, that's not part of the record, the development plan. Without any further ado, I hope to have our project in the name of Mr. Prud. Place the names, spell it on the record, so we can have it, and we'll go right into the engineering.
Thank you. Again, Robert Prud, Ethers and Frank, R. D. U. D. Professional address is Main Six Zero Four Main Street in Lake Como, New Jersey, with Dynamic Engineering.
Mr. Prud, before we begin, let's just get your qualifications before the board. What do you do for a living?
Sure, I'm a principal and director with Dynamic Engineering. I have a master of science degree in civil engineering from the University. I've been practicing civil engineering in the government for one and five plus years. I'm licensed in New Jersey and some other states as a professional engineer. I'm also licensed in New Jersey as a professional planner by examination. I've testified before hundreds of boards. I have not been to this board. I work down the street. It's great to find somebody in front of a board that's in the neighborhood, so.
Please have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Prud, you've obviously been deeply involved in the project. Has he testified both as engineer and planner?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Prud, you've been deeply involved in this project for a number of years.
I have, yes.
Do you have some exhibits that you'd like to share? Do you wanna put them up on a computer, get them on an easel?
We'll do both, just depending on your perspective. So the first one, well, it's drag.
Is it seventeen?
This is A eighteen.
This is eighteen.
This is aerial. If you could just describe it for us right?
Certainly. A eighteen is an aerial map exhibit with today's date, seven twenty one, two thousand twenty five. It's a Google Image aerial from about two years ago, three years ago, five five, twenty twenty two. We have the property question outlined in yellow at the center of the page. North is generally on the right side of the page, so you can see Route thirty five running north-south off the, off the page. Again, on the right, so you have to the west, Route thirty five, it's divided here. We've got the Marina, Marina Grill, and facilities across the river, or, excuse me, across the, across the highway. And we're mid-block again between Eighth and Tenth Avenue. Ninth Avenue was vacated in the sixties. That used to run right through the middle of the property. That was vacated. This property has been here and developed since about that time in this fashion. It was a redevelopment at that point as well. So there's been a lot going on here. I'll get into some particulars on the site, but again, just to get the board and the public grounded on where we are between. And then you've got on the east side is Railroad Avenue, which is a public right-of-way. That runs from north to south through the property, or adjacent to the property, between the property and the transit right-of-way and the train station there. Again, this is comprised of three lots. Block eighty seven, lots one, two, and three, also known as eight hundred eight ten and nine ten River Road. I'm gonna take another exhibit here, which we'll call A nineteen. And this is an enlarged version of the same image. Existing conditions aerial exhibit, seven twenty one, twenty twenty five. So again, same orientation, north on the right side of the page, Route thirty five running to the top of the property outlined in yellow. So again, this is three lots, total of about three point one three acres. You have the Water View Pavilion, the River View Pavilion, and the Delmar Motor Lodge, again, that have been here for a number of years. Well over fifty years of development on the site. Very little in what we would today call the stormwater management system that would be required today. So there are a handful of inlets on site. Otherwise, everything generally sheet flows. It's going from east to west towards, towards Route thirty five, and it's some infrastructure that's in the highway, all sheet flowing to the gutter, and then ultimately into that infrastructure. There's a small bit of runoff that goes on Railroad Avenue, which is relatively flat, and then ultimately into Eighth Avenue before it again extends into thirty five, and ultimately goes into the river. The Shark River is, as you can imagine, the title, water body with a flood elevation of eleven. For reference, the elevations on the property range from seven to fifteen. So the lowest point, about at the center of the frontage on thirty five is seven. At the east side, along Railroad Avenue, it gets up to a little over fifteen in elevation. So it's a bit of grade change through the site, but not much. And we'll show you in a few minutes with the exhibits how we're gonna address that as we read out. There are existing utilities serviced in the buildings. Gas, water, sewer, electric are all on the immediate frontage. There is, from a zoning perspective, there is one zoning criteria that is not compliant today, that's impervious coverage, where eighty percent is the standard. The site today is at eighty-two point six percent. So that's an existing deviation from the zoning ordinance, and that is important because in proposed conditions, the remodel plan says you are eighty percent or what is existing. So our benchmark for impervious coverage is that eighty-two point six percent. As far as the site goes today, there are two driveways on Route thirty five. There's one adjacent to the motor lodge, generally straight in and out, no delineation. But again, it's divided highway, so it serves right in, right out. There's a second driveway with a little bit of delineation that comes in and out on thirty five. And then finally, there's a third driveway back on Railroad Avenue, so you can come, if you're coming from the north down railroad, you can get in, or you can extend back out and ultimately get to Tenth Avenue. That's a quick rundown on the existing conditions. I'll also just point out that both intersections here are singleized. Next, we'll go to A twenty. A twenty is entitled Site Plan Rendering. That is the same image we were just looking at, the aerial exhibit. We've now superimposed the site plan and some of the components of the landscape, architect's landscape plan onto this for reference of how the building sits on the site, how we comply with the redevelopment plan standards, how we access the site, and will also describe some of the stormwater management. So what this plan is, this is based upon revision number sixteen of the plan set from July tenth, two thousand twenty five. That plan revision is the result of your professionals' review comments and our T D R C meeting. A couple of weeks ago, we addressed many of the technical comments that were brought up there and presented revised plans. Prior to that revision, we have been through the process with the DEP and with other agencies towards approval, so we've had several versions of, or iterations of plans and adjustments and revisions to address DEP comments, which I'll get into in a moment as I talk about specifically the stormwater management here. Most significantly probably is revision eleven in February, where we revised based upon the amended redevelopment plan, took the level off the building, took the underground parking out, and took the commercial uses out. So what we have here today is a four-story building. Again, it's got a hundred ninety eight units. It's got ground floor parking. So what we're looking at in the image behind here is the parking floor plan within the shadow of the existing building. Above that are three stories of the apartments and amenities. In total, there are two hundred fifty-two parking spaces inside the building and thirty-six spaces outside on Railroad Avenue. Of those parking spaces inside the building, there are several tandem spaces. There are twenty double-stack tandem spaces, forty total spaces up on the, what would be the southwest corner of the building, and those will be assigned to a single, a single occupant in our architecture. A little more detail on how the circulation of parking works inside the building. One thing we've done with access to the site is consolidated that. I mentioned there were two driveways. Existing conditions on Route thirty five, located a little bit further towards the outside of the frontage. We're consolidating that with a single driveway system. Serves as one driveway, this is one ingress and one ingress up on Route thirty five. You can see by the image, it's generally centered along the frontage, pulling it as far as practical from each of the singleized intersections, providing sufficient line of sight and ability to turn in and out of the lanes of traffic. That driveway on Route thirty five, again, it comes in, it does a loop at a drop-off area by the main lobby and can drop off. There is a pull-off where you can do a drop-off and then it exits out. As you're in that loop, there's an exit to the south, which enters into the parking garage. And there's, and then there's an exit from the garage on the north side of that loop that comes out. So there's circulation into and out of the parking garage from that. All of the parking garage has full circulation. There's no dead-end parking in there within those parking spaces. Secondary access to the parking garage is from Railroad Avenue. What we're doing to Railroad Avenue is we're modifying the southern half of that so that it serves two ways, meaning that if you're on Tenth Avenue, you can now come in Tenth Avenue heading north to get into a driveway or garage entrance along Railroad Avenue that serves for in and out of the garage. From Eighth Avenue, similar access along Railroad Avenue would be one-way, traveling southbound. The eleven parallel parking, or angled parking spaces remain. And then you come south to a stop control where it converts from one-way to two-way. We have twenty-five parking spaces along Railroad Avenue. Again, that's the thirty-six parking spaces outside the building that are requested in the redevelopment plan, so we're complying with that. In addition to the circulation pattern, there is a drop-off area off of Railroad Avenue, adjacent to the back of the building. That serves multiple purposes. That acts as a loading area. It is about sixty feet long, serves as a loading area for minor necessities for operations of the apartment, which apartment buildings and management, which would typically be UPS, Staples, those types of deliveries, maybe Amazon truck occasionally coming and parking there. Also for deliveries to tenants who come through there. Again, probably things like Amazon, UPS, as well as food deliveries, Rideshare, things like that can all serve in that area, if not along the front pull-off next to the Best of You. From the rear Road Avenue drop-off area, there's access into the building with a large double door that can be used for move-ins and move-outs, where you can park here. Typically, for an apartment building like this, a move-in, move-out would be a U-Haul truck or a small box truck that would fit easily one to two of those in this loading area. And you can come in there and then access interior elevators and lobby areas for drop-offs. Also from there is an overhead door along that same face of the building that accesses the interior trash room. So all trash from the building goes down trash chute, gets into an interior trash room, and is in bins inside the building. And then when the private haul comes in to pick up, it can pull into the loading area, load the bins out, and collect them in that fashion. So trash bins, things of that nature will not be stored outside. In addition to the vehicle parking, or as part of the vehicle parking, I should say, compliant ADA and EV parking. ADA encompasses seven parking spaces inside the building. EV, based upon the number of units, fifteen. of units, fifteen percent of that requires thirty-nine E V spaces. Of those, thirteen of them, or one-third of them, will be constructed and installed immediately, and others will be make-ready spaces to be installed in accordance with the safe criteria. All of those E V spaces are generally proximate to the entrance off Railroad Avenue and then lined up around the perimeter of the building. In addition to vehicle parking, because of the nature of Belmar and the community, we have a lot of bike parking provided here. Our architect can go a little bit more detail on the specific numbers and locations, but generally, in some of the odd areas based upon the footprint of the building, we provide a lot of bike racks throughout the building, we've also provided an enclosed room for E V bike, A bike parking as well. We've seen the comments from, that came up at the T D R C the other week, we will provide some bike racks outside for visitors as well, we're just trying to find the best location for those, based upon the location of the lobby areas and where people would be coming From a pedestrian standpoint, we're providing new sidewalk around the entire perimeter of the site, in accordance with the redevelopment plan, it will be the appropriate pattern of bricks and inlays as defined within the redevelopment plan, our landscape architect can go a little detail about the style of that, but it will run the entire perimeter of the site, we'll be providing A D A accessible ramps on all corners of our site, as well as the entrance to the building. Primary entrance to the building, again, is in the frontage along Route thirty-five, there is a secondary lobby on the southeast corner, providing access basically to Tenth Avenue, so you can then walk up into town. I talked initially about the grade elevations on the site and the fact that this is a tidal flood area, from a grading perspective, majority of the site will then be held at elevations similar to Railroad Avenue at elevation fourteen, and then grade down, the parking garage will sit above the tidal flood elevation, and then the driveways will grade down to Route thirty-five from there. Because this is a redevelopment, because this is the size of the project, this does qualify as a major development from the borough standards and from the D E P standards, so as part of our D E P applications and as part of this application, we did prepare a stormwater management design and report, we also did some soil tests out there to determine the characteristics of the soils, the seasonally groundwater, the percolation rates of the soils, and we're gonna perform that design. What we are designing towards are the borough Belmar standards, New Jersey soils and sediment control standards, and the D E P criteria under both the CAPR standards and the seven pollinate stormwater standards. There's four key elements of stormwater that we deal with, with these applications. Number one is groundwater recharge, number two is water quality, number three is water quantity, and then finally, green infrastructure, those are based upon the latest stormwater standards of the D E P. First one, groundwater recharge, because we are in a redevelopment area, it is not required as part of this application, further based on the impervious coverage and reduction of impervious coverage, it would not be applicable. Second is water quality, because we are taking this from a very intense surface parking lot, and most of this is now building rooftop, essentially improving the quality of the runoff by taking out the surface parking, therefore, we've satisfied the water quality standards of the D E P. Next is water quantity, we are bound to provide reductions in flood runoff prior to discharge towards Route thirty-five, ultimately into the Shark River, we do that by reducing the storms of the two, ten, and hundred-year storm, and we're doing that through installation of an above-ground bio-retention basin that runs along the south half of the Route thirty-five frontage and extends then along the Tenth Avenue frontage. What that basin does is that collects roof runoff, which discharges at several points into that basin and holds that water back, it goes through the planted material and the soil material that's in the basin into an underdrain, and then discharges out from there after its retenulation. What you will see from the street or from the outside of that, you will see a wall that's about three to five feet high along the sidewalk, it's a tiered wall in places, so you won't just see a five-foot wall, you'll see tiers along there, but it is about five feet above grade along Route thirty-five, and then beyond that is where the basin is, and that'll sit several feet, about three and a half feet below the top of the wall, and it's planted. So it won't look like an open basin, it'll look like a landscape wall with a planted area behind it, but it does serve a function of stormwater management and green infrastructure. Ultimately, that basin then discharges into the infrastructure Route thirty-five, which goes us across the street into the Shark River. Utilities, I mentioned, all the buildings today are served by utilities, under proposed conditions, we will provide new connections to the building, including several connections for water, domestic water, firewater, we're providing a hydrant and a standpipe, or fire connection along the east facade of the building on Railroad Avenue, we'll provide a new sewer connection, gas, electric. As part of the electric, we anticipate having two transformers, one at the north end and one at the south end of the building, we will also be relocating several lines on West Railroad Avenue as part of this application to pull them away from the property line. I will defer to our landscape architect, who'll be up here shortly, and he will be able to describe the landscape design, not only at grade that's shown on this plan, but the amenity spaces, as well as the lighting design that is provided. So what I'll do briefly is skip to some signs, again, I'm gonna go through signs from a zoning perspective, and then our architect, when he presents the elevations and renderings, will talk specifically about the signs. There are four total signs proposed, two of them are basically an address for the building, they're about ten square feet, and two of them are the naming of the facility, which is Vermella, and they will sit vertically, one is on the west side, facing Route thirty-five, and one is on the south side, also facing northbound traffic on thirty-five. That Vermella sign will be one hundred square feet, again, it's a vertical lettering, you'll see that from the architect. And finally, just for the record, we did complete and submit the sustainability checklist for your professionals to review, and we'll be happy to address any questions or comments with regards to that. While I'm here, I wanna switch real quick and put my planner's hat on and talk about a couple things where we're requesting relief, one of which, as I mentioned, was the signs. We have two signs proposed that are one hundred square feet, that are the branding of the building as Vermella. The redevelopment plan talks about maximum building sign area, about five percent of the facade, which in this case would be over a hundred and fifty square feet, well over a hundred square feet, or twenty square feet max, so because there's a cap of twenty square feet, we are seeking variance. However, as you see, we'll see from the architecturals, because of the nature of the building, twenty square feet, really, that's about what the street number size would be, this is a little bit more specific to the vertical nature of the building, the number of four stories, provides an aesthetic that matches the building and the look of the building from Route thirty-five and from, from the east. The variance for sign size, we're looking at that through a C-two variance, weighing the positive and negative criteria, specifically the positive criteria, purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and specific design arrangements. You will see, and I'm speaking before the architect is here, but you will see from his exhibits and renderings, that the pro-sign fits with the aesthetics of the building, given the size and development, and it substantially does comply with percentage requirements of the ordinance, it's just the max square foot, which might be more attributable to a smaller-sized building or multiple, and again, we have multiple lots here, we're combining this into one lot, so it's a little bit of a neat situation from that perspective. When you look at potential negative criteria, these signs are facing Route thirty-five, they're facing the Marina District there, they're not facing inward towards the rest of Belmar, so any negative impacts associated with the sign will be mitigated by nature of their presentation towards the highway on the Marina as opposed to downtown Belmar. The other thing I wanna cover real quick, there are two waivers that we are requesting, one is section forty-nine point two A six C, which is utility shade tree easements, but at least ten people width on both sides of the street shall be provided. We are not, we're proposing not to provide utility shade tree easements, and this is not new development, it's not subdivision and new roads and new infrastructure, this is existing road frontages, existing infrastructure, all the infrastructure around this property exists today, and is properly maintained within the right-of-way, the shade trees, you'll see from landscape architect's presentation, can appropriately be located within the right-of-way, so because of that, we feel there is not the need or the appropriateness for the easement. The second is forty dash eight point four E two B, the parking areas, garbage collection, utility areas, and loading and unloading areas shall be screened around their perimeters by a strip minimum five feet wide. I think we're a little conservative in requesting this waiver relief, but I will explain what we have here and if the board, so am I, will grant it for us. As I mentioned in the testimony, all the garbage collection is inside the building. We've taken the commercial uses out of this, there's very little loading or unloading that would happen here, none from a commercial standpoint, the only loading and unloading really is the move-in, move-out, and the occasional deliveries from Amazon or UPS. So the need for that perimeter strip and buffer screening is probably debatable whether or not is applicable, but if it is, it would be just to the loading area here that faces Railroad Avenue, but it's a pull-off on the side of the road, so to provide, to try to provide screening for that would not be appropriate, given its limited use and limited utility, there really is nothing to screen for a majority of the time. So with that, again, we're looking at C-two variances. I think that based upon the positive criteria and the lack of any substantial negative criteria, it's my opinion that there's no substantial deference to public good, these variants and waivers are granted, and that the granting of these waivers and variances will not substantially impair the intent in person's own plan. I guess the only other thing I'll add is we have received and reviewed letters from the engineer, July twenty-first, and planner, July seventeen, to review those, I believe I tried to address any requests for testimony related to the several component of this application, but I haven't answered any questions.
We're gonna walk through those later. That's one way as per comments.
Could you give a presentation on the waivers? Oh, I thought he was giving the basis for the, as a planner. I've got C-two for signs.
So again, sorry, the additional waiver would be with regard to, and I mentioned that the sidewalks around the perimeter are all gonna be consistent with the requirements of the redevelopment plan, however, there is a portion of sidewalk along the front and lobby area, just to provide some different materials and different purpose and intent, and you'll hear more from our landscape architect about the material selection, we are requesting at that area be a concrete waiver as opposed to the brick waiver for redevelopment.
We have some imagery that we're gonna share with you, and let's get that testimony in, and if you feel there's any more testimony back, or if you miss it, we'll back, we'll back some of the other.
And I think Doug was pulsing on, is there anything the planner wants to speak to in terms of positive or negative criteria, but it's heavily, even let the landscape architect know.
He'll talk about it, I think, we should round back to talk about that. Can you talk just about the size of the sidewalks?
Yeah, all the sidewalks are five feet.
We've got a whole board question, please fill the end.
Okay. Thank you for telling me.
More expeditions that way.
Can you give it to the height of the structure a little? If you defer to.
I think we did work in concert with the architect to make sure that the measurement of the height was consistent with the ordinance standards, so we provided some background information as opposed to the results of surrounding grades, and then the architect will provide detail on the measurement of height, but it is consistent with the redevelopment plan standards.
All right, can I have a nice place to testify?
Mr. Blake, can you just have a statement on the slide?
Lance Blake, D L A K E.
Mr. Blake, what do you do for life? And how, how are you doing there?
I'm the managing principal at Rockland, we're located at sixteen Mike Land Road in Livingston, I've been practicing architecture for approximately forty years, developed a bachelor's degree at the University, I've pre-paved for the University of New Jersey, I have a, for this work, I have a license, a license plate.
Your license is in good standing?
It is.
We accept your credentials as well.
Mr. Blake, you've been involved in this project for some time?
I have.
You attended the D R C meeting that we had?
I did.
And you have a number of renderings that are in front of you?
We have renderings, as exhibits, and renderings, as well as the plans that were submitted and changes that we've made during the T D R C, several comments that came out of it, and we listened, we took them to heart, and we did some, you know, some revisions to our plans to try to satisfy those comments, and we did.
Okay, can we start with what changes that we made, the suggestion from committee members?
Well, in terms of the floor plans themselves, I mean, the first exhibit that, you know, I'll talk to is the garage exhibit, within the garage exhibit, we talked about adding, you know, adding a room for E-bikes, so if you look at the upper right-hand corner, I'll, I'll point to it on this as well, it might be easier for me to do it here. So the upper right-hand corner, we've carved out a room for E-bikes, approximately thirty-six E-bikes, we can get in there. We've also created some bike racks throughout, you know, throughout the garage, you know, approximately, you know, a hundred or so, and we can get numerous, you know, numerous bike racks, numerous bikes. We are also on the, just to bring a little bit more clarity to the parking level, we have periodically also on the corners of the buildings carved out mechanical spaces which we'll need, we have our trash staging area, as mentioned before, our main entrance lobby will be off of Route thirty-five, in which we have our vertical circulation, our mail service, package room facilities, and then as we go up, you know, where our amenities will be, both interior and exterior. We also have our secondary lobby, which is on the plan, southwest corner, so that describes, you know, kind of what we're looking at for the floor plans. The other, when I get to the renderings, I'll explain the actual aesthetic changes that we talked about in terms of window penetration and openings, but just for the record, to go through the plans and the units, we've color-coded the floor plans, you can see the yellow, our two-bedroom. The, you can see the yellow are two bedrooms. The orange are, are one bedrooms and some have dens. We've got green, three bedrooms and COA units. COA units are a darker green teal, as well as a darker yellow for the one bedroom colors.
Can we mark that, work to eight twenty?
Eight twenty?
I hear an eight twenty-one.
Eight twenty-one? So as mentioned before, we have a total of one hundred ninety-two units that are broken down into ones, twos and threes and COA. We have twenty COA units, four one-bedroom COAs, twelve two-bedroom and four three-bedroom. Again, the units are, are, you know, a mix of, of ones, twos and threes throughout the floor plans.
I'm sorry, I know we're on the whole though questions again, but can we just confirm the unit count?
I'm sorry. One hundred and ninety-eight.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yeah, one ninety-two.
Mr. Blake, can you just, tell us the date on that plan on A twenty-one?
Date of the plan is two, seven, twenty, twenty-five.
And last revised?
Last revision, we don't show a last revision.
You revised that last one?
We revised the last one.
Okay, that's great.
As we move up to, to the second level, it's where we have our, our, our main amenities. On the right side of the plan, we have interior amenities that will be comprised of gym, a clubroom, possibly coworking. And then we have our, our outdoor amenity space with pool and barbecue areas that face the Shark River. More clarity and testimony by our landscape architect will be to come. We also have an interior courtyard amenity, which would be more passive. And again, that's surrounded by units, but open to the sky, obviously. And again, more and more testimony will be given on that. The other two levels are more or less same. The, then, the other thing that we provided was a roof plan, because we do intend to put an amenity on the roof. On the roof, we, we have a, a tower element that would be covered. We call it sort of a widow's walk. And also on the roof, which doesn't show in the architectural plan, the architectural plan, we will update to match the, the landscape plan that was submitted. And that will have a dog run, barbecue area, and again, a covered, a covered area that overlooks the Shark River with beautiful views. And again, this was originally referring to sheet PB three O, which.
Tell me.
This is PB three point O. And again, this was originally submitted and it's our typical unit layout of a typical all one, two and three bedroom and quarter unit. The units are very generous in size and their range. A two-bedroom unit will range from approximately twelve hundred to fifteen hundred. Three bedrooms are fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet. One bedrooms may range from eight hundred to over a thousand. So the units are, are very generous in size. Elevations, I'd rather talk through the renderings in terms of the aesthetics and the materials, but I just wanted to take, to note, you know, in terms of the height of the building, the height of the building meets the redevelopment plan. We have from, from, from top of slab to the roof of fifty feet and then to the top of, maximum of top of our roof, you know, our roof pitches of approximately sixty-four feet six inches. So we meet that criteria. And we have several, you know, roof, roof towers in different, different shapes throughout the, the perimeter of the building. And lastly, on the submitted drawings, we have our, our sign detail. And as mentioned, we have our two vertical signs that are a hundred square feet that are the branding for the building, vermella. They would be backlit or internal illuminated, individually mounted letters. And then we have our two address signs, you know, which would be over the, the two entrances, two entry lobbies. So that takes us through the, the general planning of what was submitted and what was re-submitted. So in, in terms of the architecture and the aesthetics and vibe of the building, if we could go to the first rendering?
That's, actually what you're showing us is what's already marked as A seventeen. A seventeen?
I think this one would be a little, two bit different.
Well, A seventeen is one of three architectural renderings, which is the. The first of three is the quarter of eight to thirty-five. About, you want to mark it as a separate exhibit, that's fine. I'm just saying, we've already got these marked as A seventeen, that's one of three. First one is eight to thirty-five. Last, next is the railroad side. And this is the, what I refer to as elevation on Route thirty-five. What I mean, if you want to mark them separately, this one.
Yeah, let's, let's just mark this one separately, I think there was a slight tweak to this one.
Yeah, it looks to be slightly different.
There was a slight tweak from what was originally submitted to this. It looks very similar.
No, I, this, this will be the first time anyone's seen this?
Uh, yes.
So then, yeah, so this is a, a rendering looking, I guess.
North?
Northeast, right. From Route thirty-five, main entrance of the building. During the T D R C, we talked about windows, window sizes, we talked about materiality and color and finish. And we also talked about, at the base of the building, the, the grill openings for the garage. And, you know, after, after reviewing some of those comments, we, we did make some revisions. We felt that that was important and it made a lot of sense to us. So we did, you know, make the opening square grills consistent throughout the building and around the building. Also, from, from a, an architectural point of view, the main, the main thing of the building is to, to create something that is, is contextual, you know, with the area. We took some cues from some of the other buildings that were recently developed that had fiber cement, flatboard siding, stone, standing seam roofs. This building is obviously a, you know, a little bit larger in scale and has a lot more going on. One of the main themes was to create a, a horizontal banding, sort of a, a, a solid and void configuration where we have, you know, the idea that a banding would culminate in some, you know, large horizontal balconies and infilled with large floor-to-ceiling windows, glass, and hardy, hardy siding. We have two tones of, of hardy siding. One is, is a light beige. And then the other, which is recessed in, in various areas where we have balconies, that would be a darker blue, like it's, and I have some samples to show as well, which we'll do. You can also.
I'm sorry, did you say darker blue?
With, it's dark blue.
And that's on this rendering?
Uh, you can, you can, you can see it a little bit in some of the areas that are surrounded by stone. The inside corner balcony areas have some, and, and, and on the other renderings, you'll see it. The ver, the, the vermella sign will also have that.
Oh, I see it there.
Yeah. Okay. And then there's also some horizontal banding at the roof line, which will also have some of that material. So it, it's, it's, it's a minor part of, of the, you know, of the materials, but what it does is it creates a little bit of, of an accent and it helps pop out the, the other materials in terms of the building. You can see the, the roof forms, the hip roofs, some of the gables, those are, we changed those. Again, originally, we were thinking of the charcoal type tile. And based upon the different comments that came out of the D R C, we chose to go, decided to go with the standing seam of the dark charcoal color. And then I have a sample of it as well.
Are you going to bring up those material boards? Because it would be good for us to look at that while you're going through.
Sure.
I'm sure they would be marked as exhibits, but I think the board's probably prepared seeing those colors as true samples.
This one's heavy.
If you can, you can lay them across in front of the, the table. Yeah, if you can lean them against the leg on that, that will help because everyone will look at.
Can we call that A twenty-three?
Mark that as A twenty-three material. Sorry, referring to the, the rendering versus the materials. This is the, the blue.
Can you, can you give me the specific hardy color?
Sure, it's deep ocean.
Okay. And then the cobblestone, what is that?
One is cobblestone and the other one is river rock. We wouldn't be using the stamped texture, we would use the clay.
Okay, where you have panel and then you're going to do lap siding with a wood grain?
Um, most likely with clay. Yeah, I just, yeah, we didn't.
That's okay, it's a color sample.
The stone, which is, it has a range to it. It's mostly of the, you know, puff tones with some, some gray mixed in.
What's the wood grain of, is that aluminum?
This one?
Yeah.
Um, when I get to one of the other, I'll.
It'll come up?
It'll come up. We have, and, and, and the back of the building.
Well, let's just, yes, can I do it for, we can work for our back. But I thought, thought it was good to be able to do this.
Um, we also talked a lot, we also talked a lot about the, the window configuration. One of the members of the T D R C has some concerns about it. When you see the renderings, I think it, it'll make a lot more sense as to what we're doing because, again, we have this, this horizontality and the infill would be with the floor-to-ceiling glass. However, there is a lot of variety in terms of window sizes. We have nine-foot three panel, we have some two-foot eight panel, we have six-foot two panel. We have some windows that have transoms. We have some, some separate clear store. We have sliding glass doors throughout. So it's, it's, there, there is, you know, there is a lot of variety and, and it does, you know, reflect what's happening on the inside as well. And I think that a project like this, which has, you know, beautiful views, a lot of natural, you know, a lot of natural light, especially, you know, off of the living spaces and balconies. In this, in this view also, you can see on the, the, the upper left-hand, upper left-hand side, we have our, our widow's walk amenity. And again, that will have beautiful views of the water. I think it's going to be a really attractive amenity for the building. Let's, let's look at another.
Very interested in the railroad side.
Since we talked about the other wood, let's, let's look at. This, this is a, a more detailed view looking at the, the amenity.
Mark, this is A twenty-four. Give me a description of the view that we're looking at, for the record.
Let's call this the, the amenity view.
Amenity view. So it gives you a little bit closer perspective as to what's happening on that amenity deck. We have a pool, we have a, a more passive seating area, possibly with, with barbecues. We've added also a detail of having some, some flags maybe, you know, in the front. Gives it a, you know, a more beachy, you know, water type vibe to it. The, the, the wood tone that you were, that I was referring to in the sample are separations between units where we have horizontal balconies that are, aren't connecting. So it is, it's a privacy.
Privacy panel.
It's a privacy screen, yeah. So we thought that that, that added a nice, nice texture and a nice detail. The, the horizontals and the, the hardy or the, the fiber cement board are tone on tone. So the panels are flat, they're not lapped. It'll have a little bit of texture to it, you know, so it'll, it'll, it'll offset from it. We also, it also may be a slightly different tone of, of, you know, of, of the hardy, slightly different color. So it might be the cobblestone and, and the other one. As mentioned before, we had some, some pops, some elements of the, the deep ocean. And again, those occur where, where we have a deeper recesses and it, it helps bring out the, the light tones of the, of the building. The other major material obviously is the stone. And there's a fair amount of stone, you know, throughout the facades. And it's going to be a natural stone, not a, you know, not a, a fake, you know, you know, a fake cement stone. The, the rooftop amenity and the rooftop amenity will expand into having more passive seating areas, barbecue, as well as a, a dog run. And a little Bauer or Tom Bauer will, will speak more actually of the materials of the amenities or committed. I'm going to save railroad for last.
Mark, this is at A twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
A twenty-five. Again, can you describe the purpose of the record while we're looking at it?
Mr. Blake, this is looking at the building from Route thirty-five, looking to the south.
Looking to the south, correct. So, yeah, so as you're coming from the bridge, this is the view you will see looking down. One side of the building obviously has a lot of movement to it. The corner of the building has that horizontality, you know, of banding that culminates into large deep balconies. Again, one of the changes that we made was to make the openings to the garage, the grillage consistent throughout the building. Same comments, you know, descriptions as to what's on the other renderings. The rooftop amenity and, you know, all the different peaks that give the building a lot of, I think, a lot of character. Last but not least.
Railroad down.
Again, one of the, I think, one of the concerns and comments that came out of the T D R C was the cost of the length of the building and the fact that it's close to the property line. Is there anything that we can do to help, you know, mitigate and break up the, you know, the massing? And I think, you know, what we did was there were areas in this wing of the building where we had a little bit more room between our property line and the setback. And we were able to pop out some of these stone elements, give it a little bit more depth. And then there were areas where instead of having our roof overhang the balconies, where we just opened it up. So there were, I think, moves that we made that I think were, you know, helpful in terms of breaking it up. And you can see that there is a lot of, you know, a lot of ins and outs and a lot of texture to the door. And also, a little bit further down, we've also added some of our parrot pit, you know, type gables and roof peaks, which are on recent elevations.
Can we just zoom in a little more on the, on the, just a little more, so the break of the scene?
It also appears you made some changes in the windows, similar to the other elevations. We made some changes in the window heights. You have transoms above or below.
Yeah, we've always had those. We've always had the transoms. Yeah, we also added...
The mansard lance, we added the transit, right, because we had a flat...
Identify yourself, the purpose of the record spelling your last name.
Yeah. Yeah. I have that personally.
Mr. Blake, hold on a second. Diogo, can you stand up for a moment? Tell us your name and spot your name.
Diogo Santos, Director of Development. D I O G O S A N T O S.
He was previously spoken.
Yeah, I was just pointing out that, you know, from the T R C meeting, we added the mansard element.
Well, that was...
No, that was here too. That was here too.
No, that was...
Yes, this was here. This was a flat parrot pit. And then we added the transoms as a result. So I think that's where, you know, Mr. McDermott was pointing that out.
So, you know, I think that, I think that this elevation has been improved. And again, the notion of the horizontal banding, infills of hardy siding, and then our pops of deep ocean, I think, really, really, really helped mitigate the massing of this facade.
Thank you. Thank you. It appears you've listened to the T D R C comments. Appreciate it.
No, we appreciate it.
All the windows on that level and the lower level, all the crests are all the same.
Yeah, they're all consistent except for where we have our lobby area and glass. And the garage is a passively ventilated garage. It won't be necessary for it to be tentatively ventilated. I think that's described.
Can we just bring up the garage plan again on the screen and then exhibit back on? Can you zoom in a little on the top left-hand corner of the damage? So we'll see what the bicycle park makes of it.
Yeah, so we have fifty-six bike racks up in that corner. And we have another fourteen over by the stair exit. And then we have another fourteen over by this garage exit. And then we have our thirty-six e-bikes, you know, enclosed in the room.
So are those, the racks, will they hold the fourteen, the thirty-six?
That's Christine Bell, B E L L.
And has been sworn in.
Yes.
Want to answer her question? Can you answer her question?
Yes.
So the bike racks you're saying, the numbers you counted, the thirty-six, the fourteen, the other ones, that's the total amount of bikes that can fit in that area?
Correct. Yeah. And that's based upon a particular product that we were looking at and designing.
Do you want to identify this space?
That will be a mechanical or utility space or a maintenance space. Once we get into the details, the construction elements of the building, we're going to be locating mechanical rooms, maintenance, utilities, things of that nature. So we're carving out areas, rooms that we will be utilizing for.
And can you identify the same where you have hash marks? I know, obviously, you have an elevator or these hash marks or any of the other spaces while we're on this...
When you say hash marks, I'm sorry.
Well, look and get across here down the bottom. What is that space with the X in?
That's an elevator.
Okay. Same thing over here?
Yes.
So for the record, would you be testifying that that room in the top left and others like that will be back to house?
Correct.
Will not be amenities, that will be back to house for either utilities or used by the building management?
One of the things that we just recently discussed that didn't make it to the plans, but we will in a recent mission, is we do want to, because we're going to have a dog run up on Route, we do want to have a dog spot. And we're considering putting that over by this elevator and stair lobby area. So that might go next to this mechanical room.
Between those two. That's fine.
Absolutely.
But what's on the plans today will be back to house.
That's all that.
Add something like that potential.
Yeah, that's it.
Is the architect going to testify about the tandem spots?
I think he can offer a testimony.
Yeah. So we have a lot of two bedrooms and three bedrooms and those tandem spots will be allocated, assigned to either the two or three bedroom.
So there are twenty tandems. They'll be assigned to twenty of the two or threes.
Correct.
And every parking spot in the garage will be assigned?
I believe so.
Yes.
Thank you.
As you just answered, yeah. Diogo.
Diogo. You got D I O G O.
Thank you. We'll stick with it. The mechanical room that's kind of oddly shaped on the right side of the screen, on the right side of the plan.
This one? Yeah, that's the e-bike storage.
Now, all that, okay, the other oddly shaped...
Oh, yeah. So we're going to need some mechanical space for the pool. So that's logical space for it because it's why we do the pool, almost, pretty much. We also did locate on this plan that I did mention before, bollards at strategic spots to protect, you know, some of the corners of the building off of the circulation.
And that was added as a result of our engineers' comments?
That's correct.
I don't have any further questions, Mr. Blake.
There's a couple of questions. Except for Miss Bell.
Sorry.
Mr. Mack? Who were there? Who were there? It's fair.
First, please, the numbers.
Mr. Brown, please state your name and history.
Yes. Sir. Thomas Bauer, B A U B R.
Thomas Brown, what do you do for a living?
I'm a landscape architect.
How long have you been practicing as a landscape architect?
Very long time. I've been practicing now for, I just have, about forty-nine years.
You started when you were forty years old?
Forty years old. I'm a graduate of Penn State University in nineteen seventy-six. Started as a licensed architect in that point, so Matt is correct. Yes, I'm a licensed landscape architect in New Jersey. I'm the president of the Louisville Power Carmen Landscape Architects. Our offices are, one main office local and one nearby, and we have a Jersey City office as well.
You prepared plans?
Yes, I did.
And the plans are on the screen there?
That's correct. All of my names are in the project, so we actually turned it on. All of our images are on the screen behind you. There aren't many, but I think you'll enjoy it when you see it, Matt, of a very nice...
By the way, we accept his credentials.
Yes, thank you, Howard. Thank you, Chairman.
So the, can I, can you provide more questions?
The first image, this is actually a rendered version of our landscape plan submission sheet L one. This is rendered and the orientation is the same as you have seen. North is to the right. This is Route thirty-five to the west, to the east is the railroad, and we have Eighth Avenue and Tenth Avenue this area. One of the trademarks really of all of the vermelto projects is the beautiful landscape that we have the opportunity to implement, and we're doing the same here. Along, in terms of, let's talk street trees first if I may, along Route thirty-five, we have Zelkova street trees. All the hard trees and plant material, by the way, are in full compliance with the Seaport redevelopment plan. We agreed to change some varieties after the request of the Shade Tree Commission. So again, Zelkova along Route thirty-five, on both Eighth Avenue and Tenth Avenue, we have cane dole trees, and then we have a lace park elm along the railroad side of the building. All these shade trees are great. They have fall color, seasonal interest, and it will be appropriate for this location. In addition to that, we have a very varied, wide palette of plant material, including deciduous and evergreen shrubs, certainly ornamental grasses for our coastal look and beach feel as landscaping is made it, ground covers, and perennials as well. We have a whole list of perennial flowers that will provide seasonal color throughout the year. So again, a very, very interesting landscape, I believe. I'm going to focus a little bit, a couple of images, on the entrance area. I think you probably got a nice presentation of the building. I'd like to show you a little bit about the entrance. Matt, if you could go to the next image. This is the view from thirty-five. Matt, pull back just a little bit. There you go. So thirty, this is Route thirty-five. You can see the, you heard mention of the decorative pavers, all of the sidewalks, again, five-foot line brick sidewalks throughout the entire perimeter. This is our entry drive coming up. And we go up, I think it's about a quarter foot grade change from thirty-five up to the presentation of our lobby entrance in this location. And it's decorated with beautiful plant material all along the area. We have shade trees. In the interior area, we have a Kentucky coffee tree. We have crape myrtle throughout the area. Again, these are all tolerant of some salt that we get from the riverfront as well and provide tremendous interest in the landscape. We have ornamental grasses throughout, and again, I mentioned color throughout the landscape, hydrangea, other flowering perennials and things. So the entire site will be alive and vibrant throughout the year. Off to the right, Matt, I want to point out that we have, as you saw on the site plan, there's a retention basin that goes from this point all the way around the corner on Eighth Avenue. It's a tiered wall system, the basin behind the upper wall. That retention basin will also be landscaped with plant material that is wet site and drought tolerant, birch trees, eastern red cedar, and other type material that will be appropriate for that type of landscape. The balance of this...
Will that be the colors of the retaining wall as well?
The color of the wall, we indicated in this rendering that we will match the building and complement the building. At the time we did this rendering, actually, Chairman, we did not know what that material was. So the intent is to match and complement that building. Yes. Okay. So we also, in terms of lighting, you can see the light fixture here. By the way, we do have experience satisfying Belmar, as we mentioned, to point this out. The reading room is one of our projects across the street, as was the boardwalk. Post Sandy, we designed and assisted in the reconstruction of your boardwalk as well. And this is the light fixture that is on both of those projects and will continue through here, which is part of the Seaport redevelopment plan here.
Matt, can you zoom in on the light fixture a little?
I think we have some, like, talented, I think we have about twenty-nine beautiful fixtures throughout this area, which will be very, very nice in the end. So pavements, lighting, landscape, very attractive throughout the entire set. Matt, a couple more if you have something to say. I'll take a little bit closer look here. Now, I'm taking a view from maybe on the third floor, looking down at the entrance area. This is our entry drive and turnaround. We have a drop-off here, area, drop-off and pickup for residents. We have a series of steps that go up. We have three rises that go up to the upper landing, to the front door. And we have handicap access via a ramp system and a sloped walkway that comes up to this area. I think it has been talked about the change in pavement.
Yeah.
This is the area, Chairman, right? We're in this area where on many of the vermelto projects, we like to use a stamped and colored concrete pavement. That's very attractive. It's in a beige tone. It feels beachy, a little bit unlike the red brick that's at the, at the street level. That's what we're proposing, if you should allow us to, is to do that at the entrance. This is the only area, I believe, that where we're using a stamped concrete. Otherwise, it's red.
And is that dry, the stone?
This would be a textured stone, yes, like a concrete paper, a little bit of a marble to it if you would.
Okay.
Like a quartz stone if you're, you may be, like, a quartz stone paper. Yeah, something of that nature.
And a contrast at the border.
That's right. A little bit of, so again, we like to give some attention to the pavement detail because it really goes a long way in terms of aesthetics. And we have a series of bollards that will be selected through here, ample lighting again at the entrance. So it's a great space to drive through, walk through, but also to look down at bollards. It's very important for us when we have three or four stories of architecture above this, so our residents from their homes can look down and see something attractive. Again, in this image, you can see some of the crape myrtle, ornamental grasses, and Kentucky coffee tree as well. Next image, Matt? And then one, a closer look, again, the same area, just to give you a good feel for how important it is for us to develop a beautiful entrance to the set. Again, same area, this is a drop-off area, steps up to the area, handicap access area to the left, and attention to the coastal feel of the landscape to a number of variable types of ornamental grasses. I think it will be a terrific look here, a terrific look. Next image, we're going to jump up and I'll tell you a little bit about the rooftops.
I just want to slow down a second because we're going to a lot of, we just definitely don't think we've walked any of the records.
We haven't. What I'm going to ask you to do, because none of these have been provided to us earlier, I'm going to ask that you put these on an appropriate format for our Edge Year or annual planner and provide those to them. Once we have those, I, what I would like to do is just, you give me a title, whatever the file is, we'll mark that as an exhibit. Because I'm going to tell you that you'll see a standard in my language for the resolution that we are relying upon these documents, these images. that we are relying upon these docu, these images, the effect of what the asphalt conditions are. I'd like to make sure we have the record that it goes that we had a mark, which it may be what we do is we figure out how we want to call this file number. Perhaps we mark this now, you know, A twenty-seven of the, of the file images. And identify that it's not only architectural, but it's landscaping, architectural, architectural. And that that file will be provided to our user or planner. Any problem with that?
No, that's fair enough.
Thank you.
Is this, what we're going through essentially is just a color rendering of the file we received, twenty twenty-five, seven eleven, another landscape?
That's right, the first rendered plan was sheet L1 from the last set.
So we are kind of going through what we already have, just in color.
To that, I agree. I'm talking about the images we've seen of proposed architectural renderings or landscape renderings.
Matt, can you zoom in on that?
Yeah, so this, this, the entire page that we're looking at is sheet L three from our submission set. The upper plan that we looked at, Matt just zoomed in on, is the second floor. Heard presentation on this level from Lance Creators. Matt, if you can zoom in on this area. This is the southern portion of the rooftop second floor, which is an outdoor rooftop above parking level. All of the residents on this, on this level have, has private patios in this interior space. It is an interior outdoor rooftop, right? So I think there are sixteen residents that will have a patio within this space. And then in addition to that, there's common access space to hallway locations. We can enter the space from here as well as here. And that will provide circulation access to the outdoor area. That will include what we call a feature wall. It'll be a vertical wall that will have barbecue grills on it, perhaps a fireplace on it. There are barbecue grills to service this dining area. So it's really, it's intended to be a passive outdoor space for residents to communicate and relax and socialize and making, cooking burgers. A very popular area. It will be landscaped. There is, you can see there are little flowering trees throughout this area, ground cover, again, ornamental grasses. The same palette of material that is on the street level will be carried up onto the rooftop as well. Lighting will be addressed as well, and it's a very nice, quiet, passive area for the residents. To the north side, and if you go to the, to the right side, this is the pool area that you saw divisions of from Lance previously. Again, Route thirty-five is on this side, and we have views from the pool area and from this lounge space out to the charger from the second floor. This is all an interior amenity space in this location. We have access to the pool located here. The pool is fenced in, closed by coat in this location. We have chaise lounges, a gym that we shaded pool area that is just a little bit of the level above the deck area due to the elevation of a garage below. We have an outdoor area in this location, some synthetic turf, some composite wood decking. There's a trellis, a shade trellis in this location, and site furnishing, a fire pole, an ample lounge space as well. So this is a year-round opportunity for residents to come out as opposed to this area, which is a seasonal pool area. Open three months and then closed for the nine months, obviously, in our planning. You saw a view of this from this direction by Lance Creators. If we go to the next level, down below.
One question, is there a ramp to get to that pool for those?
There, there will be a handicap lift. If you zoom one more time, Matt? There, because this, this coating is set fifteen inches above the deck, there are steps up to it. But there will also be a handicap lift to provide access for handicap residents who would like, yes. And that's all I care about. And then the last image that we have up here, in terms of plan view, this is the fifth floor, the upper roof deck. You heard Lance mention a widow's, I think he called it a widow's rock. Widow's rock, that's this area. So this has a canopy over it. This is a fixed roof in this location. What we intend to do is furnish this, this is a magnificent location to hang out. And because from the fifth floor, we get dramatic views of what is perhaps one of the nicest sunsets I'm sure you've all experienced. One of the greatest sunsets that we can see up and opposite the shot through this location. So the views from this area are tremendous. It would be a great spot to hang out. We have a stair tower right in this location that will provide access to this area. We also have an elevator over here that will provide circulation for residents to come up and down below. This stair tower will have a digital screen on it for movies. So we have a little bit of a movie lawn here for smaller groups to watch a TV, watch a movie at the evening. And again, we have some barbecue grills up in this location, some communal dining tables, individual dining tables as well. And circulation as a, there is a re-root proposal for this area. And then lastly, this area right here, again, one of the most popular aspects of these rental communities is a dog rug. They're very, very popular in all of our communities. This is about twenty-five by seventy-five feet in length. So it is a great opportunity for residents to come up, bring your dogs up for a run and hang out with their neighbors. Next view, Matt, is I've got a couple of views of this space. There you go, that's the dog rug. Again, we're looking to the north in this location. Very popular, as I mentioned, and we have seating opportunity. Plans are in this location with a great myrtle, some seating opportunity for the residents to hang out while our dogs are robbing the area. It is fenced in, as you can see here, a four-foot fence all around to secure the dogs. There is a dog vestibule, so we can enter, you know, take the dogs in more than a time every winter there. There will be water provided for the dogs, bags to pick up, droppings, whatnot, and it's a synthetic turf solution. And it will be washed regularly, as we do with all the other communities. And then one more image, Matt? This is the, this is really the gem of the rooftop. This is where we can, you can see a sunset here. This is the widow's walk. We've got a lounge in here. You can see the barbecue area in this location. These folks are sitting in the evening, watching a movie. And it's a nice end to the day, if you will. And as well, that's my presentation. I think we have a terrific, beautiful project, and we're excited to share it.
No questions, if you have any?
We can reply with everything that was mentioned.
We can, that's correct, yes. I don't have any more questions.
Well, until the end.
No, it's all on the next to the next. Can you state your names while you're asking?
Yes, Nicholas Berderesi, B.E.R.D.E.R.E.S.E.
How long have you been on each panelist?
As long as you like.
You can call me later.
Okay.
And Mr. Berderesi? Say it right?
Berderesi.
Berderesi. And Nick, who do you?
Yes, I'm a bachelor science student, civil engineering, Rockford University, nineteen ninety. I'm the principal of factory dynamic traffic. I'm located in Belmar Plaza here in Belmar. So I think that should be enough right there.
Just a little more information.
Licensed professional engineer, state.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
You're very familiar with this project, though?
Sure.
You've had an opportunity to study the traffic in the area.
Yes.
The intersection, as well as, you're deeply familiar with the project.
I guess so.
Were you able to round some opinions while you were in charge?
Yes.
And then just get what you're.
So we prepared a traffic impact study. It's last revised July eleventh, twenty twenty-five. That last revision was to address the comments from the board engineer. So essentially, I'll go through, we did actually a series of traffic counts. We've been on this job since twenty twenty. So we did some counts back then, and updated those in the summer, August of twenty twenty-four, on the surrounding roadways. I'm going to work off of A twenty, which is the rendering of the site plan. Again, orient everyone north is to the right. So Eighth Avenue on the right, Tenth Avenue on the left, thirty-five on the top, and West Broward Avenue on the bottom. So we did traffic counts up at the four intersections here during morning peak hours, rush hour, the evening peak hour, as well as the midday on Saturday. So those are generally your highest hours of traffic in the area. Then what we did was, we assigned traffic from this proposed hundred and ninety-eight units utilizing instituted transportation engineer's data. Just so the board is aware, we took no credit for the existing uses. So we just left all that traffic on and then added on top the traffic. So we were a little conservative in our, in our estimates. But if you look at our report, we have a comparison table of what the existing use generates from I T E. And it's not that this similar from what this proposed project generates within, you know, essentially a dozen vehicles up or down in the peak hour. So the traffic in and out isn't going to be all that different from, you know, the uses when they were operating at their, you know, their fullest capacity. But there are some changes to the access. Mr. Frude mentioned earlier, there are two existing driveways. One is located much further to the north. One of the issues with the driveway being located further to the north, when you exit the site, you're immediately in the right turnway. So if you want to continue north on thirty-five, you have to move over a second lane. So our driveway being pulled back further is a benefit to that driveway. Having only one driveway versus two as well reduces conflicts there. Another one of the, the nice things we were able to do with this project, the existing site, there's no access from Tenth Avenue to get onto the property. We were able to add that by creating a two-way aisle along the rear of the building to get to the parking garage. So that better disperses the traffic on the property on and off. And, you know, anyone that wants to go east into town now can come from, from Eighth Avenue, can come from Tenth and leave on to Tenth in addition to our main Route thirty-five access. So I think that's a significant benefit. The type of users is different as well. You're going from a transient type uses, the banquet facility, the motel. People from out of town aren't familiar with the roadways, to moving it to residential where the vast majority of the people coming and going are there every day. They know their way in and out, so they're picking the best ways in and out. And you're going to get a lot more walkers and bikers from this project than you ever had in the previous use. So that, again, is reducing traffic volumes on the roadway. And we're providing a full amenity of sidewalk all around the perimeter of the site. We're updating all the accessibility at all of the intersections. The access to the pedestrian buttons at the traffic signal currently don't meet standards. So we're fixing all of that. So you're going to have a nice compliant project here as far as pedestrian circulation within and coming and going from the site. There's also, as you mentioned, it was mentioned before, there's some lighting upgrades. We're working that out with the NJDOT. So we're very close to finalizing our permit with NJDOT. The last item is really the lighting along the highway. As far as traffic and impact, we did analysis utilizing all the standard methodologies of the adjacent intersection. We did identify some minor tweaks to the signal timings out on Route thirty-five that we're going to suggest to the Department of Transportation. If it's something they're, they're open to, we will make those minor changes to the, to the signal timing of the intersection. But otherwise, you know, the traffic impact per se is really negligible here versus what, you know, what you've seen over the years on the property. I'm not going to really talk about the internal unless someone has some specific questions. But there's thirty-nine pairs of tandem, which we've used on a number of projects over the years. Two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces meeting the redevelopment plan. Twenty-four aisles minimum, meeting all the standard residential site improvement standards, design criteria. A well-laid out entrance area with a drop-off as well as the loading in the rear for access for residents as well as UPS FedEx type deliveries. That's all I have.
We're going to upgrade the corners for EBI?
We hope, yes.
I don't have any further questions, Mr. Brown.
See your last one, just.
I have Mr. Santos. Talk about operations a little bit. I just have one question that I want to ask him. I came up with the, I remember you had a question. One of the comments that we got, the review committee, was about the number of residents that may have dogs in the building walking around the property that we may draw the, behind. How do you handle this at your other department?
So we actually, you know, when we registered the titles in our community, we treated DNA sample from the pet itself. So we find that resident or pet was going somewhere, destroying the landscape, the grass, or the droppings. We're able to test it and then assess the bond to the resident. The best deterrent that we could have against that is really providing a dog run. So we really tried to do that, and that's why here we took the extra step and we put one up. So that, that's really the best deterrent, but we do have that as well in our scope, which, you know, we make sure that the residents are responsible.
And you would follow that DNA protocol of this project?
We would, yeah, a lot of properties would.
Paulson, you're serious?
I am not in a joke.
Yeah, that's why I thought this was the most interesting, that's the one.
And by the way, that's not, not a compliment.
I've heard in public, we've told it all, that's, I've never heard.
I mean, we, 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 obviously, the community, yeah. We, we know that the community wants to make sure we police it, but we also want to police it because, you know, we want to keep the property clean and we don't want to do that, there's a problem, so.
My son's property in Charleston has the same test, two DNA tests. I just want to bring Mr. Frude back to talk about the variance from the concrete, instead of brick in the front. If you think it's that, that's one of his, Chairman?
I think he agrees with me. Thank you.
I think we catch you in a very, another claim. Mr. Frude, he's had a chance to hear Mr. Brown talk about the concrete, sand concrete, when it comes. Matt, can you bring that in, touch up? Mr. Frude, see the image on the monitor, the furniture way, the sand concrete?
Certainly, and, and we understand, you know, the goals and intent of the redevelopment plan and ordinance as we comply with that around the perimeter of the site. As you can see from here, it provides some, some different aesthetics here. You heard certainly Mr. Brown better than I can describe the aesthetic benefits of changing material, changing color, changing use there. So and because it is interior of the site near the entrance, near stairs there, I think it provides an appropriate different type of use there. So when you look at it from a, similar to a C two, it's a way for positive negative criteria. The benefits are similar to the variance, the desirable visual environment. I think any negative, negative impacts are mitigated by the, by the overall aesthetics of the site and the use of the materials around the rest of the, of the site.
Is that the test for the S to C two? So I think this is a way.
I believe this is a way. So similar, similar discussion on the value as well about positive negative.
Is that clear? Just the design that we're seeking from.
Be clear, design, correct?
Correct. It's a better design, the opinion of.
Yes.
Do you want to walk through our questions?
I, I don't know if this is the, you want to walk through the planners' reports where you're outstanding, engineers' reports, however you all. But you have a copy of the engineers' report, the latest of July twenty-one versus twenty-nine? But you have a copy of the engineer's report, the latest of July twenty-one versus PD nine? Basically, my, well, I'll have you. July fourth?
July twenty-first.
July twenty-fourth. Can I tell you your last name?
O R I guess.
Basically, my understanding of PD nine, which is your latest report, those things which are still contained in the report are the ones that are outstanding that should be addressed by the app. Correct. We have a number of them, but most of them are probably...
That is correct, and we tried to identify the ones that remain outstanding.
Can you walk us through the concerns of the engineer? But we tried to, if we start with C four completeness on, I guess checklist, section two, on page two, page twenty-one, twenty-five?
Yeah, so with regards to the C, so on page two, we indicated that the checklist items we're providing, the table indicated all setbacks, hot colors and height ratio, the density required and suppose should be added to the plan along with the approval from signature blocks of the chairman. We indicated that that can be provided under the condition of any action by the board. Additionally, we had a comment with regards to the north arrow, which also could be added or taken care of after the action of the board. Is the obligation problem to make those additional, the obligation?
Absolutely.
There was also a comment with regards to the E V parking spaces. And I believe that the app can have addressed that this evening. That was on page three of our briefing letter.
Yes, but it's not from this section of the card, we're requiring the floor area ratio. That would not impact. Floor area ratio, you're not advised to perform floor area ratio, and this is based on C four applying criteria.
That is correct. So, that was more of a generic comment when including the floor area ratio. They are obligated to apply it with all aspects of the agreement and the amended C four redevelopment plan, with the exceptions of the variances or design waivers that have been previously discussed in C four.
And you would agree with me that floor area, to the extent that they're providing sufficient parking at least for the residential units, that's why floor areas are not...
No, floor area ratio isn't a standard in their amended area.
Correct, because they're providing...
No. It's just not a standard in their area. They need to need it.
Okay.
See if I can ask the question this way. To the extent that there's not a conflict with the existing amended C four area?
There's no conflict with the amended area and the building for this area.
And in what instances does that fall back to the original C four, the document twenty-eight?
Unless it's referenced specifically in their amended plan area, their amended plan area, it's not up to the set.
And even if you did apply it in twenty eighteen, you're essentially required sufficient parking on-site for all residential units, even under twenty-fourth inch minimum.
Typically, the floor area ratio is a density measure, not necessarily tied to the parking requirement.
It is.
The zoning for their area is different than the zoning in the C four redevelopment plan from twenty eighteen. So, what is in their area applies to them. The twenty eighteen zoning and requirements for floor area ratio and parking do not apply to this set in four.
In the twenty eighteen plan, floor area would be one forty-five.
Correct. Unless they provide all the required parking on-site, which would be two, which is different from their parking requirement.
Thank you. Got one I need.
Just keep going down the list, if you can, please.
Certainly. So, they indicated a certain number of spots will be, I think there was fifteen spots were going to be, E V spots were going to be built with the current proposal and then balance would be made ready for spot.
But I think the state regs are one-third, one-third, one-third.
Correct.
So, initially one-third, three years later, the next third, make-ready at the point of C O, and then the next, the last third would be three years after that.
Right.
So, of the thirty-nine total required E V S E spaces, thirteen will be built out initially.
Thirteen. So, the initial C O for the rest, the balance, the twenty-six are make-ready for future at the point of C O.
Correct.
And I have a question with regards to the E V spaces. Will they be charge park spaces or are they going to be free to the residents? Have they come?
DM has a question. Come on in. Come back up. Are we going to charge the E V residents to a charge?
At this point, we are not charging, but, you know, that could be slightly changed in the future, but at this point, we do not.
The only reason why I ask is when they are non-chargeable spaces, well, let me answer this. Is the access to the parking garage key card gated?
Yes.
Okay. So, then it wouldn't be, it would be near impossible for somebody other than a resident to use everything that they have.
The only question, it's not open to the public. The only question is, are they charging for it or not? All the parking stalls are assigned, so they may have some offset fee to cover the cost of that E V charging.
I thought they were associated with, it's not a harm, what we have, but just to be honest with you, again, it probably will start to charge at one point and define something in the lease. I could see that happening.
My concern is that if it wasn't gated, if it wasn't...
Right.
And you'll have people coming to use your...
I would have, because it's pretty, correct.
Thank you. So, on page, bouncing to page three and page four, where we do summarize the all requirements, one of the questions that I had that's not in the report that I wanted clarification from either the traffic engineer or your site engineer with regards to the usage of the off-site spaces in railroad avenues. What's the premise behind that as opposed to just having sufficient parking within your project as opposed to taking advantage of off-street parking? How does that play into your project? Do you require the street park on railroad avenue to meet your building requirements?
The building requirement is based, is inside building. So, it's based upon number of units, there's a specific part of the requirement for inside building, and there's a separate part of the requirement for railroad avenue.
And all of that is going to be pursuant to and in compliance with the ordinance and the agreement?
Correct.
And those thirty-six are not assigned, correct, on railroad?
No.
They'll be open to the public.
They'll be open to the public.
And not assigned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your insight.
Yeah.
And the tandem spaces, again, I believe I heard testimony that they're going to be assigned. Is that, how will that be guaranteed?
So, they would be to a unit?
To a unit.
The tandem itself, both spaces would be to a unit.
So, that would be dependent upon the management agreements, at least with the tenants, right? So, we were looking for testimony with regards to the adequacy of the trash enclosures, and I also wanted to confirm height in the, in the parking garage where the trash enclosures, where the trash was being collected. Has that been thought out? I mean, in terms of how it will function, maybe you can give us some testimony, how it works in any of other facilities?
Just to be clear with your question, the trash will be wheeled out. There's not a dumpster that's being picked up and drawn, right? So, I mean, whatever the home garage unit is would be that, this has been a trash room within the, the containers are wheeled out.
So, it's a two-and-a-half-yard dumpster, right, that's in your trash compactor room, it's wheeled out, trashed morning, wheeled back in, trashed evening? Is that correct?
Yes. I don't know if it's exactly that, or is it a reloading zone?
Where is that going to happen, though? So, now that, now we have outside trash enclosed, and it's not even enclosed, so maybe you could...
No, it's wheeled out, day of trash, and then it's brought back in. It's wheeled out, reloaded, and then it's brought back in.
What's that, DM?
I just to supplement that. So, we do have our individual trash refuse rooms, right, within the development, but we have a staging area in here along railroad avenue. And within that staging area, we'll have two-and-a-half-yard bins. That exterior sort of garage door will be left open the day of trash pickup. So, when, you know, the collector comes on that day, they're going to open up that door, and our maintenance staff is there as well. They're going to wheel out the bins, dispose of them, and then wheel them back into that room itself. So, it's a stage, think about it as an interior trash enclosure, so that the time that the trash is sitting outside is only when it has to be sort of like brought to the trash.
It's going to be actively loaded and unloaded.
Correct. And then staged back into that room.
It's never even sitting outside.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's important to have it in any action that trash will not be staged in any outdoor area, and the access or loading and unloading the trash will then occur in specific hours.
Correct.
Or within a specific timeframe. I just don't want...
Yeah, you don't want us to like bring the trash out, have it sitting there for multiple hours. And neither do we, as the owners, neither do we. That's why we came up with this.
Just to add on to that, will recycling be handled the same way?
Yes.
So, would you like to stipulate the hours that we pick up would happen, or?
So, I think we don't want to do that because we don't know exactly how much trash is going to come in and what they may have to do with the day, it may be...
Yeah, I mean, that's...
So, you need to give us some more thought before that can be determined?
What about any, like, bulk items, bulk pickup? Would that just be handled through the burrow or?
Like the furniture, refrigerator, that kind of stuff?
Any large items?
Yeah, I mean, this would all be a private hauler, so within our communities, I mean, we don't typically put out like a bulk day because then people could just leave everything out there. So, it's all privately hauled and the residents are responsible for their own sort of like sofas or anything like that that they want to dispose themselves.
Okay.
Is it fair to say that the trash hauling will occur in the mornings and will not conflict with the potential move-in, move-outs in that same loading area?
Yes, we stage, once we know when the hauler comes, we'll stage the move-ins accordingly. We'll usually have like a move-in in the morning, one in the afternoon, and then the hauler will come sometime in between, so...
It'll schedule around?
It will schedule around there, yeah. We'd never have both sort of happening simultaneously.
Okay, please.
Looking through the on-page five now of the report, we did request testimony with regards to the tandem spaces that was provided, baller protection. We're looking for testimony for the non inclusion of ballers around the support pillars. So, are there ballers' proposals required around support pillars and rock? Or support pillars would be designed?
You already mentioned that.
Yeah, so the entire podium and columns were poured in place concrete. They would not really...
They're not required then.
Not required, not required by the...
Thank you. And Ken, we would prefer any comments to the fire official, however, with regards to the roof, actually this came up during the T D R C meeting, that the fuel for any outdoor fire pit areas or for any of the barbecue grill areas would need to be determined to find that's not being propane? No tanks?
No tanks, no.
Yeah, I think testimony at that point was naturally asked. Can you continue with that?
Correct.
Thank you. Continuing on page five. So, there was a concern that was raised in, this is for the traffic engineer. We had raised a concern with regards to the turning radius of emergency vehicles in the main entrance area. Within the plant set, the revised plant sets that we received, it looks like that the emergency vehicle cannot maneuver a full turn in that space. Can you provide testimony as to how emergency vehicles will be able to enter and exit that inclined area?
So, we'll certainly work with the fire official with any comments that he may have on that. But typically what we do in an interior setting like that is we work with the fire official. What their goal typically is, and I would defer obviously to your fire official, but the goal would be to have access for the ladder to get up. Often, a fire truck would not want to come in there for firefighting purposes, more for emergency egress and evacuation. So, you would provide room in there for a fire truck to pull up so that the ladder can extend up to evacuate people. And then the egress movement of the fire truck can be a back out. At that point, you could have the road blocked for a purpose of responding to evac. You have other emergency responders there, so it's not uncommon for a fire truck to back out at an interior situation like that as opposed to doing the pull-up. If a loop had to happen, I'm sure there could be some multiple point turns in there, but we're happy to work with the fire official to set that.
Those are any thoughts making the building a little smaller so you could execute a turn for the fire trucks?
Honestly, the, our experience with situations like that, that's a typical movement, so we didn't think that that would drive the design of the building.
So, as a condition of the application, you're willing to meet with the fire official and coordinate access, egress, exit?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll move on with regards to the, I had a comment in here with regards to the rooftop. So, with the dog run, I understand that the dog run will be cleaned, but when it rains and when you clean that dog run, is that going to go into your rooftop drains? Is there a way that can be treated before that?
It's like an irrigation system, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have them in our communities and, you know, the runoff from, let's say, from the, I don't know if it's going to, if it goes into a sanitary line or a roof line, but I know the code stipulates that. I mean, you know, obviously follow the code. But there would be a drain, obviously.
There's going to be a drain.
It's synthetic turf with like a drainage layer, so there would be a drain on the roof that would be...
So, my point being is that there's going to be a higher concentration of urine and other feces in that area just because of the nature of dog runs. Will it be treated or are you just going to allow it to run off and...
It will not be treated, no. We don't treat it.
So, it's not going to be treated?
Correct.
But the drain itself will be connected as per code?
As per code, yeah.
Whether it's sanitary or...
Sanitary, yeah.
Thank you. Our comment with regards to the drainage design and grading design, the applicant and address following action by the board, I'm on page six now. With regards to the sanitary sewer and the water supply, as I indicated at the T D R C meeting, we're evaluating the condition of the water mains and sewer mains across the frontage of the property. We'll provide you with our complete water and sewer review, but as I indicated, if there are upgrades required to the infrastructure across the frontage of your property, you will be required to address that.
I think that's covered by the redevelopment.
Well...
But that's a yes if it is...
Well, I think it's covered by the redevelopment. I'm looking at the settlement agreement, it says that the warrant, this permits, engineer time record, water, sanitary, sewer capacity, issues of part additional cost related to structure, occupancy, otherwise type of project. So, that's changing. This is the first time we hear it.
So, that's not, capacity is not a condition of the infrastructure. Capacity is the ability of the system to carry the flow. The condition of the infrastructure, meaning if it's old A C P pipe, gittered by clay, if there, it's typical when a project goes in front of a water sewer utility, in this case a water sewer apartment, that the improvements across the frontage of that particular property would fall to the development of the, yeah.
I think there is a section in the redevelopment agreement that covers that. There's a section in the...
Can you dig into that for us? Can you dig into that for us?
Yeah, I think I... Yeah, I think I.
Concern there is who's responsible for.
We have the taxpayer or the.
I mean, do we know the extent of what?
We're still in the process of performing that review.
So we wouldn't know what, you know, are you saying that we would have, you want us to agree to something that we don't know the extent of?
Oh, yeah. What I'm saying is that we're in the process of performing the water sewer review, we have not completed that yet. So, I am pointing out that as is typical for a project that comes in front of the board, that infrastructure improvements that could be associated with the frontage of your property typically fall to the app. Different than if you're any other project in town. Redevelopment agreements supersede that and that would go by redevelopment.
We've got the 2.05 infrastructure improvements. Redevelopment agreements, infrastructure improvements may be required in comparison to projects. An agreement that it reduces sole responsibility to undertake infrastructure, such to the terms here on the construction law, in regard to off-site infrastructure and the allocated cost thereof, along all benefits of the redevelopment. Redevelopment will design infrastructure improvements as specifically required according to the requirements of the government approvals, including work in light manner. This is where you.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So, what's your interpretation of that?
It's that.
It's happening.
So I think we have to cover it, but I think it gets prorated much for other people in the area that are doing similar.
Like a.
So if somebody else, so if we put in, there may be nobody in this. This is more commonly seen when somebody puts a new road and a new sewer made in, and then they die down the block, it's the same thing, tries to piggyback over the policy you laid out. So, this is sort of more important to play redevelopment agreement law, it probably doesn't apply.
My question, we could reread that. It also said that the design should be on the app, not, we're paying our, why are we paying our borough engineer to do this research? We should be hearing testimony from the applicant to why our storm sewer water services are capable now and don't need to be.
So, through the chairman, you bring up a very good point. But in, when applicants come before the board, and in this case where the borough has a water sewer utility, we're, as the borough engineer, we're obligated to review what they propose. And as a part of that review, we would review our infrastructure. We've already reviewed it with regards to capacity, it's just what is the condition of the asset across the frontage of their property. And if the redevelopment agreement stipulates that they're not responsible, then so be it. But it could be that if there are requirements or upgrades needed because it's an older plate pipe, for example, then I would always look to the applicant to pay for the cost of that. But.
I was looking to put escrow in your time to do this research.
Well, it sounds like.
I don't know, that's redevelopment.
My review is covered by the rest.
Thank you.
So, Jim, if it's fair, then you haven't evaluated condition, only capacity, so condition still needs to be looked at. And it sounds like the redevelopment agreement is clear in terms of who is responsible, should there be a need to upgrade that, is that correct? Yes, and I did hear off-site, I have to reread it myself just to make sure. But off-site infrastructure, I clearly agree with you that we're not, I'm not indicating off-site infrastructure. I look at infrastructure that goes across the front of the property. Across the front. Is not off-site, yeah. Okay.
No, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, just keep moving this road.
Yes.
We're beyond our time.
Traffic. Landscape has been covered on page seven now.
With regards to lighting, I did have a question, just a general question about any building mounted lighting and any stances or any exterior lighting associated with balconies or lighting in and around the widow's walk area. Is that all, would it all be indirect lighting, not shining out, there's no floodlights, everything would be downward?
Yes, it would wash the facade, and yeah, there would be nothing going out there.
I'm sorry, you said washed up the side?
Yeah, so we'll have.
I think he was talking about downlighting in the widow's walk.
Oh, you're talking about like on the actual, yeah, so it would, I mean, we could work with, obviously, our intent would be to have some ceiling mounted lights shining down from the widow's walk, you know? But we could place them where you're concerned with as people are driving or walking by, they could see the glare.
Correct, yeah. And same thing with, you have balconies overlooking different areas for individual residents.
Yeah, so we usually do like a small open light that shines.
It would be a downward light, not a floodlight, not a.
And the same thing on the ceilings, it would be a downward light.
Not a lantern light.
Not a lantern light, yeah.
So they could be shielded if necessary to take the light with you.
Yeah.
You'd be willing to do that.
Yes.
Condition will move out, agree to consult borough engineer, type, intensity of light.
Yes.
And that's it for lighting. I believe the traffic engineer has submitted the additional information we were looking for. And I had another, two other general comments I just wanted to. So the architect testified that there'll be accents in deep ocean color. Is that also gonna be the color, the roof is decided to be a standing seam metal roof?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And it would also be that deep ocean color?
No, no, it'll be a charcoal, correct.
I think there's a sample up here, correct, of the metal roof. I see a small piece of metal. Is that the roof?
That's correct.
It says charcoal.
So that's correct. And then, Mr. Chairman, there was only one other item that I just wanted, when listening to Mr. Verderesi's testimony with regards to the existing traffic counts and the difference between the types of uses. So, Mr. Verderesi, with regards to this current use, and knowing that now we're moving to a, you know, a residential use that is near round, right? In your opinion, what are the impacts to peak boarding and peak PM traffic volumes? Did you review that and what can we expect the impact to be?
Yes, well, I kinda testified to it, but negligible changes, all the levels of service stay the same. There's some changes in delay. As I mentioned, we're gonna make a recommendation on NJDOT on some signal timing adjustments. But as far as traffic volumes, it's a handful of trips different between existing uses that have been proposed. And we used only a 200-seat banquet hall. There's much more than 200 seats, but that's what we utilized. So, I'm very comfortable with the, with the traffic analysis involved.
I thought you had said that you left that in place and added your.
We did, we did it conservatively. I just wanted to let everyone know that we were conservative. It really should almost be a zero change, but we assumed the full traffic lines from the proposed project.
Based on your study, you're projecting little to no impact to the level of service?
Yes.
But there are gonna be certain timing changes that you're gonna request the DOT to undertake?
Yes.
What would those traffic, do you have a three summon?
It's a two to three second change in evening peak hour and Saturday peak hour. There's different timing points for AM, PM, Saturday, or P. So we're gonna make some recommendations and some changes. One of the changes is traffic coming from the north to make the left. It's a current issue now to make the left onto Eighth Avenue, so we're gonna try to get some time moved up into there to help the queuing on that approach.
And then the only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is that they're changing, the applicant's proposing to change the traffic pattern on West Railroad. So if the board acts favorably on the application, governing body will need to do some ordinance revision if they have an ordinance for the traffic pattern to designate that leg to be two-way, currently one-way. Correct. And we also had the TDRC ask for some signage as well, correct, in controlling that?
Correct.
Unless you're, I believe that was added to the plans, correct?
I know we're, we, at the TRC, we definitely talked about it, had no outlet sign there.
Right.
If it's not on the plan, we'll make sure it's there.
And Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further unless the board has any question.
Can I just come in here on the traffic thing?
Yeah.
One thing I noticed when I went through the report, and I don't know if it's relevant or not, but there was no comments concerning the fact that there's a railroad going behind there. And that railroad, you know, I have the chart here for the different hours that the train stops. And in the morning, you know, you're looking at 5:01, 5:34, 6:08, 6:41, 7:03, 8:01. So, in conjunction with busiest time of people moving in and out of the development, we'd also have a train opening and closing. And I saw no comments about how that, you know, impacts the traffic. The other thing I was concerned about was too, that intersection on 10th, I just looked on Google Maps, and I don't know that there's enough, if you're coming up 10th Avenue and you wanna make a left into the, into the street which we're gonna have to make a two-way, I don't think there's enough room. Because there's already a sidewalk there to protect the angle of parking. So you're going from a wide, two lanes, you know, crossing, and then you're gonna have to like kinda squeeze in. And it just doesn't look like that's gonna work.
So your point is it may be too, it may have been designed to be one-way, maybe too narrow or too.
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know the width of that, I'm sure dynamic looked at the width of that.
Yeah, and I think they really need to look at that because I don't think there's enough room to be.
I don't have the dimensions in front of me, but we feel pretty comfortable.
I have the dimensions in front of me. The existing road is a little wider, we're actually changing it to a 24-foot cartway. So essentially similar to what you have in a parking lot, which is all that really is, right? It's, while it's called a street, that's really just a little parking lot.
How wide is it currently at that point?
It's a couple feet more than that, I think we adjust, at the corner, we're adjusting the radius there, but it hasn't been a 24-foot wide road. The center line may need to be realigned on the other side, as the mayor mentioned, the center line doesn't exactly match, it's close, but doesn't match exactly. But you want the wider width in that little island, because people are kinda swinging a U-turn a lot of times around that. But I don't know if it's an issue, because you come and stop, you're not through traffic trying to figure it out, you come to the stop bar, you see you can go across, and you go across into there. And the volumes are low. Essentially, someone that might be using the train that wants to park there, a visitor to this site, someone that parks, walks to the marina, they may park over here, and then people coming on the property. It's very low volume.
Is the applicant willing to look at that intersection, including the restriping out in the center area?
Yeah, so it's very.
As a condition of the application?
Absolutely.
Is that a yes, Mr. Attorney?
That's a yes.
I'd like to know what the width of the, of the cross.
Curve to curve there.
Yeah, in the island portion of 10th Avenue, where cars are gonna go north and south, what that width is. Because if it's, you know, you just said that that width is 24 feet, but if we, if you're coming from a 36-foot width, and now you're gonna have to move to a 24, I just don't think that that's, that's gonna work.
All you really need to do is align up the center line and you've satisfied that issue. You want it to stay wide on that side. It's already much wider than West Railroad Avenue.
On the opposite side, yeah.
Yeah, people are, you don't have a lot of volume that actually uses that little spot. But most of the people that turn in there are gonna be people that just want to.
Well, or commuters.
Were people from across the street that wanted one?
That's the place where the moving trucks are gonna be turning into, because people wanna move in and out.
No, no, they come, don't come from the eighth. The loading zone is on the one-way portion. So they're gonna come from Eighth Avenue, drive up and pull off to the side.
What happens when they come up 10th and they turn in anyway? Now what's gonna happen? You're gonna tell them to turn around?
Get them back out.
You're gonna tell them to turn around?
So if you're moving in, you'll go through the leasing office and you'll get instructions on that approach. So it's not a common happen situation where we get to direct traffic into the site, so you'll know to come in from.
So then maybe we should have a sign that says no trucks coming in on that, that portion of the two-way street?
That's fine.
We could ask. Because we gotta say, you know, basically it's one-way, as you get further down as well. That driver is himself. So you're willing to add that as.
Yeah.
I would actually, I was kinda thinking, like no deliveries, because I'm imagining, there's a couple spots from questioning where your Amazon, your food delivery services are gonna probably get very confused. Because there's a different driver every time. So that would be something, they may, I don't know, if a food delivery person pulls in on that side, can they even get through a gate somewhere?
I would anticipate, you know, Uber and all that stuff, it's gonna happen by the front door.
Yeah, they're gonna go through leasing.
The only ones coming in the back are, you know, maybe you might get UPS to come back there, you know, to have a full 30-foot truck or whatever, and obviously the move-ins of the trash.
I, yeah, I think your Amazon, GPS is still get, they're just, I'm more like the DoorDash person that's there.
They're the front.
Yeah, you know where GPS trucks are often in a certain building, so a no-delivery sign would, I think, would be just as, probably better than no trucks, no deliveries would there.
Speaking of deliveries, so now I'm thinking of the front of the building, you know, you're probably gonna have Amazon trucks there and whatever, multiple times a day. Is there enough room for cars to get around the stop truck that's there?
It looks like there's a drop-off, right?
Yeah, there's a drop-off, a 12-foot wide drop-off and a 15-foot wide lane. So it's 27 feet wide, so it's more than adequate for the.
It's got 198 apartments. You might have an Amazon truck there permanently.
I think, kind of just to go back to Mike's comment, I know on a lot of complexes, they're now putting in like a parking space for, you know, the DoorDash, the Uber Eats, or even just for like ride-share pickup, things like that. Is that something anticipated, is there gonna be a designated area for those types of things, where like if someone lives in the building, gets an Uber, will it just pull around?
Yeah, I mean, that's the primary purpose of that, a drop-off lane off of Route 35 at the main building entrance. So I think we could have like three vehicles along that drop-off. And that would be where, you know, based on our experience and, you know, in our other communities, you would have the leasing office there, that's where you have your mail, and that's where residents would come down and you, let's say, the Uber or DoorDash driver. So, those spaces along there would be, you know, dedicated for that. But they're, you know, temporary, right? Someone drops off, parks there for a few minutes, goes inside, gets back in, and drives off, so.
Let me just ask a couple more questions on the engineer report, on the grading design, geotechnical analysis, and retainable design, will the condition of the application correct and approved of that, agreed to that? We have exceeded our 9:30 time to open it to the public and we haven't heard from our planner?
I'll try to be brief.
Okay, I hope the public can be patient with us, but I'd like to get this through before we open it up, so.
Sure, so I'll just go through my comments that I've not been addressed. The first, and probably the largest one, I think, is the consistency of the most architectural plan, the concept plan, the C-Board redevelopment plan amendment. I think for the most part, you know, the applicant has taken into some, taken into consideration the concerns of the TDRC. For me, I think the roof lines are a bit of an issue. If you look at the plan and the concept plan, there seems to be a bit more peaks, especially I think on the immediate avenue corner, there is a peak elevation there. And I think it, you know, breaks up the overall massing of the building a bit more than what we've seen tonight. So, I think that certainly something that's to be worked on before choose to act favorably on it through resolution compliance. But I would like to see a bit of a redesign to the rooftops. The next comment I have, I think that the amount of bike racks proposed are significantly underestimating the demand on site. There's one hundred and ninety-eight units and one hundred bike racks. That means that if every unit has at least one bike, there's like, there's almost double the amount of bikes per bike rack. And we all know, I mean, even the traffic engineer provided testimony that there's gonna be a lot of walking and biking from this site. We all know that people that live in Belmar, especially in the summertime, ride their bikes around. I imagine people that live in this building would often ride their bike to the beach and places like that. So I think that probably needs to be some more bike storage internally for residents. Residents can obviously store their bikes in their apartment units. But I imagine that if there's not some additional bike storage, it might end up just, you know, on a fence or somewhere by the train station or something. So I think that's something we want to be concerned about to keep the site looking. And they did, I think, say earlier they would provide a bike rack outside. So that's just something I think we wanna look at during the resolution compliance as well.
Well, I think the bike rack outside was requested at the T D R C for guests.
Yes.
There is EV storage. I'm not sure how many bikes that holds, but it's probably in the range of thirty or forty in there. And I think the other bike racks were in excess of a hundred, but I don't know how much in excess.
Altogether, they're a hundred and twenty-four.
Hundred and twenty-four. So the question is, can the applicant get that count up? I know there's some mystery rooms still, like the one room that our attorney asked about that was rather large, that seemed to be back of house or maybe a maintenance shop or something like that. Seems over generous for a maintenance shop, but...
We could, we could add more.
So can we get that count up?
I mean, like, if, could we do like one fifth? I mean, I...
I think the biking demand, the bike demand in this building is going to be very different from any other...
I mean, we don't do ourselves a favor, let's say, you know, shortchanging our residents for bike storage. So, I mean, we could also provide a future bike storage room if demand should exceed the hundred and twenty-six that we have. But, you know, we wanna obviously appeal to our residents' demand and preferences of how they...
I think that's fair, you know. I certainly don't want there to be wasted space, but I think...
I think that's a great way to approach it.
I think you should plan for more than a hundred.
The other comment I'll make is that for those that have expensive bikes, they never put them down in that home there. They're up in their apartment. Because that's a five-thousand-dollar bike. I'm not leaving it down with somebody's, you know, a hundred dollars twenty in there. So at the end of the day, there's gonna be quite a few people to keep them in their apartment, so. I think there's something to be said for that. But if the applicant's willing to make it a condition that they'll have a future bike expansion area available as a condition, I think that would go a long way.
We're happy to work with the board professionals to see if we can locate additional areas.
Okay.
But if obviously the building is not fully engineered yet, some of the technical issues may not be quite as large. There may be quarters that...
I think that would be terrific.
Then, just based on the T D R C, we ask that all of the trees on the planning schedule be revised to be listed on the borough's preferred tree list. I believe the last...
Mr. Bauer did testify that...
It will be, yeah. The last plan I saw still has some that weren't, but just to make sure the submission...
On the record, the changes will be made.
It will be made.
Based on this hatred, we should like it.
And then I just recommend, you know, all street furniture, if you will, like the trash receptacle that I think is out front, the future bike rack and benches, things like that, be included on the site plan so we can see details of them.
And we're willing to add that, those details, including the future bike rack that you're still evaluating where. Thank you.
And then just my last comment is, you mentioned at the T D R C as well, but in compliance with the redevelopment agreement, testimony should be made as to efforts to incorporate energy-efficient design components, building materials throughout the project that are in accordance with the US Green Building Council guidelines. I don't think we've heard any of that tonight.
We certainly talked about it in our preparation meetings. And if you want to hear, we have to start it on the record. Do you have to do that tonight or someone else?
I think it's a matter of record, I think we should hear. And I'm not sure whether the architect or who's gonna testify.
We would probably start with the architect.
You can give a brief summary.
Yeah, I can give a brief because I really want to get to the problem.
So there are a number of strategies that we take. We're not intended to be recertified, but with the checklist, we went through the whole checklist. And I think that we've come pretty close to, you know, achieving the number of required points. But some of the strategies that we do take are energy star appliances, our glass and glazing. Storefronts are all low-E, energy-efficient glass and glazing. We have, let's see... Well, yeah, so the thermal insulation around the building, you know, in terms of code, are, you know, a combination of R nineteen and R thirty, you know, on the siding. And a lot of the code has changed to a degree where, you know, the, it's really upgraded the efficiency of the envelopes of the building. Another thing that the developer, the owner does is they have a central boiler rather than having, you know, two-hundred hot water heaters. So that's an efficient, you know, method of saving a lot of, you know, electricity. There are also green roofs that, you know, help with the heat island effect, as well as having, you know, the majority of parking underneath, you know, within the garage. A lot of the materials on the interior are gonna have low VOCs, you know, as well as the paint materials, certified wood products, recycled content. Even a lot of the exterior materials will have recycled content. So that's, you know, primarily the strategies I've taken in terms of, you know, efficient buildings. There are a number of also site-related and landscape and stormwater management and things of that nature that add to the point total for, you know, a sort of...
We'll also be able to, you know, we anticipate having a naturally ventilated garage just because of the openings along all the four sides. So, you know, that'll alleviate us from having mechanical ventilation and all the energy required for that. So those are things that we try to do whenever we can as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments before I open it up to the public?
I have a question concerning the stamped concrete. What kind of, it looks like there is an incline where you're planning to put that. I have stamped concrete. I have found it to be very slick when it got wet or a little snow. Are you gonna avoid, because there's no railings around that arch? Is there something...
I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
Will there be a texture on the stamped concrete to avoid falls?
Yes, there is a texture applied to the concrete, yes. It will not be slippery.
All right, my next is about, the navy blue misses the beat. There's no pop with navy blue in your design. And I was wondering if we could lighten it up to like a lighter blue? So when you look at it, it's more in keeping with the seashore community where you see, you know, turquoise or a light-colored blue. When you look at balances, there are, you know, lighter colors than... I've spent some time looking at your other buildings. This building could have been in anywhere in New Jersey because you have so many of the other attributes you have in your buildings. And I don't see anything really special to fit the seashore, commuting, ocean-living lifestyle.
What was ten, what?
I'm gonna agree also, you know, this is a seashore. Your building only shows us the shore. It's all sand. There's no sea. If you look at our, this is our, one of our things with the waves and the blue and whatever, you know, it is... This is Belmar. The building that we have up there, that could be, could be an office building. It could be, you know, I don't know, I kinda, you know, I hate to say it, but I used to drive on Seventy-Eighth going into Newark. And, you know, I saw Northern State Prison, and they have the same color on their building. So, I mean, you know...
So I'll speak on, yeah, I'll speak on the ownership side. I'm also a registered architect. Look, we really tried to work with Lance and our design team to do something unique here. Looking at the balance of our portfolio, and we've seen it's all a lot of flat roofs, flat parapets, modern designs. And what we tried to bring in here after this project, obviously as we studied the neighborhood and the community around, we brought in all these peak roofs elements now. You know, economically, they're gonna be very expensive to construct, right? So what we tried to do is go out of our way to bring something that would bring character to Belmar and that fits in with the marina across the street with a couple other buildings within the community. So what I'll say, just to answer Mr. Sharke's comment about, you know, is this different from our other projects? We haven't used these peak roofs to the degree that we use here in other communities. We haven't used the standing seam. We haven't used these mansards with the transom. The stone here that we're representing, we haven't used to this degree where it becomes more of like a common material and that element throughout the actual architecture. So, you know, we don't have a building in our portfolio, in my opinion, right? And obviously, you know, you guys are granted to your opinion. We want to make you happy, right? We heard a lot from the T R C meeting, and we tried to do our best to incorporate that here. Obviously, if you have more comments like the blue, I agree. Maybe that is too close to the charcoal on the standing seam. Maybe we could work on that blue, right, to kind of, you know, reflect some of the colors you showed on the...
Because it could be the entrance way to Belmar. You know, this is a shore community. That's a, that's a development that I could pick up and put in any community in New York.
So would you like to see more of the blue used throughout the project?
It needs to be, you're the architects, you're the experts. Development for a shore community. This is like any place...
Roof lines need to be adjusted because this is not what's on the concept plan. And, you know, the image of the, like, the pool rendering you showed looked very modern from that viewpoint. There were a lot more, you know, peaks and eaves to bring in that seashore look. And I feel like that's missing.
Well, so, just so I understand, you're saying that we don't have enough eaves and peaks throughout the development? Because along every parapet, we have an eve or a mansard or some type of gable.
So if you look at the concept plan that's in the redevelopment plan versus the elevations today, you have, they're different.
I would say we added along the rear of the building, just so I'm clear. Because what we did here, again, based on the T R C meeting...
Some of these changes were made.
Yeah, we actually added more eaves and peaks to this. Like, there's no portion of the parapet where we could fit another eve or peak on this project to a level where then the architecture, you start to lose the architecture and the character, so.
I think on the, and I, you know, the board could disagree with me, but on the concept plan in the redevelopment plan amendment, you do have some flat sections, but they break up the eaves and the peaks a bit more.
Right, so here we had a flat section, and we added this mansard eve in response to one of the committee members that along the railroad side, they wanted to see a little bit more articulation on the parapet. So the one in the middle there where you have it right above the hand, we added that in to add more articulation to the parapet.
I think the west side of the building is really the concern for people, not the east side. Because the west side is...
You're talking about, you're talking along Eighth?
No, along Thirty-Five.
Railroad, railroad.
Thirty-Five. The entrance to Belmar.
It's just a gateway to Belmar.
Right.
So that's this elevation here. That's this elevation here.
Correct.
So again, along the parapet, if you look along this representation, between the gables and the mansards, right? We do have some flat sections, right, to give some relief or else you can't express the gables. But there really is no other place where we could further articulate the parapet, in my opinion. And we did that for a reason. We did that to bring the character to the building, right? So if you're saying we have too many, because now based on the concept plan and the redevelopment plan, we have more, we could obviously eliminate some and get back to that. But from the concept plan and the redevelopment plan to what we have today, we've added further articulation at the parapet line.
I personally don't want less because it'll appear more like an office building. So I don't want to pull back. There's two points of discussion here. One is the color palette, right? So that's one part of the topic. You're bringing up the other part, which is roof lines, how does it compare? Personally, I think if we pull any of these peaks out, it's gonna make it look like the mess that we were trying to avoid at the T D R C.
I agree.
It's absolutely a concern.
I agree, I agree.
I think that there...
So I'm not in favor of pulling them.
I agree with that, but I think there is some issue with like, say, the Thirty-Five and Eighth Avenue. If you look at that elevation, that corner, like, I think...
That's this corner here.
And that is what people see when they're coming into Belmar.
So we think this is probably the sexiest view of the building, pardon my terminology, is the Eighth and the Route Thirty-Five. And again, looking at this as you're coming along the Shark River, the bridge. You know, this corner here, if we added a peak here at this corner, at this intersection, we would have to remove the one on the internal. We thought it would be nice to have some relief here just because your sightline, as you're pushing down the building, you're gonna capture so many different views and so many of the angles as the building is bumping out, the widows walk. We thought adding another peak there would actually, you know, start to diminish the value of the architecture at that point. So, you know, I guess the image is, you know, speaks for itself, right? Like, we think that there's really no other opportunities to add more articulation except for this corner here, which we could study. But we have studied internally and we felt that, again, it was just a little bit too much.
I personally think that if you added a peak to the corner or pulled the other two peaks, I think this coming from north to south, that's the view. And I think that that corner being peaked with the other two pulled down would have created some balance across this elevation, including kind of how it would tie with your widow walk. Personally, I think. Because it almost feels like that corner is missing something on that roof there. And I don't know how others feel, but I feel like that should be the point of prominence because, you know, we got two directions coming in where you're gonna see this gateway, right?
Right.
One is south coming up, which, you know, that view seems to be attractive if you have the signage there. I think on this corner, I feel like we're emphasizing the railroad side a little further back, whereas this corner...
That's fair, and I'll tell you why. We struggled with that.
Yeah, I could see, yeah.
We struggled.
I could see both ways.
What we could do is we could bring that concept before the board. And, you know, we could look at both and we could make a decision. But we struggled with both. We have the other one modeled, but we could... But we could obviously entertain that and let the board make the decision.
Yeah, I don't know how others feel, but I feel like that corner emphasis would be good.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it would be good to see both.
I think more of the more macro issues is we're a vibrant northeast coastal community. That's what we are. We're across from Marina, we're in the Seaport redevelopment zone, we're blocks from the beach. We're, you know, near the Shark River inland. And what I think a lot of us are seeing right here would be amazing in a mountain town in Rockies. It'd be beautiful. In Belmar, I just... I don't...
So, let me ask you this question. Do you think that the standing seam, pulling the charcoal out and going with more, like, a reddish tone?
No, actually, I think it's the exact opposite. I think, like, I think...
You want to see, like, a light blue on the standing seam?
Coastal community, if you drive around our town, right? If you spend... If you guys spend two hours driving around, or an hour driving around in time, you're going to see white, blue, green, you know, white, blue, greens, grays. I think just the color palette is a little off.
So, I mean... So, the tans on the stone, like, the stone as a base, I think can work. Like, if we changed the standing seam to, like, a turquoise blue or...
It's not a turquoise... I mean, I'll leave that up to you guys. I'll leave that up to you guys.
So, it appears dark. Maybe we went with a light gray. Look, if we go with a lighter color palette, go a little bit lighter on the stone, you know, once again, going towards... And that pop of blue, I agree with Linda, that if we could go with something brighter blue, it's an opportunity to create a nice accent. And I understand the architect going dark, because it's kind of a recess.
Yeah.
But you'll lose it, and I feel like if you could go with a pop of blue there, go with a light gray in the standing seam, so it doesn't feel so dark and stark. And then a lighter color... You have cobblestone, it's a nice light color when it's up. But maybe lighter stones and a lighter standing seam.
Do you have a blue that you could refer us to if you count on...
More contrast between the lighting and the dark, because they're all kind of... Don't pop.
So, you want something that pops a little bit, with the colors?
A little wider, maybe almost a wider on some tiles, almost a lighter blue on some. Maybe it doesn't work, but we can see it.
Can we... Ahead of... Just a preposition, ahead of the next hearing, I know I shared some renders of April ahead today. Would the board be willing to see some options that we could carry the next week or two? Just so that we don't come here next meeting, right, and we're giving you guys something that you're like, "That's totally not what we wanted." Could we maybe within the next week or so?
Keep in mind that we need to discuss it, like, in a public session.
Agreed.
We can't have a private email. But you can send a couple of options, two or three options, that we can look at, and we'll have thought through it, and then come back, and we can discuss it together. But I think you're hearing a couple of things. One, obviously, the concern on the roof. I think if we can see that variation, that may help us there. And then if we can go with lighter, more seashore alcohol color palettes, that would be great.
That's right.
I would recommend that you just take a big loop around the borough. I mean, if you just drove, if you guys just drove down Inlet Terrace, you would see alone that that just doesn't fit. I mean, if you did a loop, Main Street, Inlet Terrace, Ocean Avenue to North Boulevard, you would see what the incomeness of the borough and the town itself.
But further that, I would just say, as far as that corner, you need to take a few trips over the bridge, Thirty-Five.
But you want this to be the highlight.
You got to sit up there. Because what's happening is you're seeing it from an angle coming down, and it's...
So, what you're saying is you do want to see our building.
What's that?
You do want to see our building, is what you're saying.
I want to see it, and I want people to say, "Oh, we're in Belmar." You know, but, you know...
Now, we... Like I said, we...
Very nice view when you come across the bridge, where you see it.
And the fact that you're saying that, I think we know what we need to do.
Keep your eye on the traffic. Yeah, yeah. That red light comes up quickly.
Can we, at this point, shut down questions? Can I open it up to the public? Because we're well over the time that I wanted to do. I want to ask questions before I...
No.
Mr. Chairman, if we're recording this, you know, it's a session.
Howard.
We got it.
Did that engineer come?
Always the engineer.
Good. All right, at this point, we're going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to make a comment about the application, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address. Good evening.
Thank you. Sandy Bruno, Surf Avenue. My question, how many affordable units are actually being built in this?
Lance, do you want to... It's twenty?
I'm sorry, what was the...
The number of affordable units.
Twenty.
Will actually be built in?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you. Are these drawings online? No, no worry. We can get them. This is it. Okay. All right, thank you, and...
To the extent that we do get a file, make sure it goes to the planning board, engineer, and planner, and we'd rather make that accessible to the public. We should be able to...
Okay. And I wish we had that doggy DNA system for the whole town.
Anyone else in the public? All right. So, you know what, I'll close public. I'm going to turn it over to you, Doug.
For the... For the landscape... Engineer. The plant species, all non-invasive?
Absolutely.
And I think you did testify that they're salt resistant.
That's right.
Yes, sir. And I believe it's covered. Your utilities, all underground?
So, the working person utility issues right now, our company, they're being... The borough's attorneys and professionals, we could still go down. Some of the overhead lines on our mall are out, you know, could be relocated. Or we could empower company to tell everybody what they're doing.
Okay, so you anticipate having it before we get to...
Hopefully, it really depends on how quickly the utility comes to respond.
Well, they're very responsive.
The information you were shipping from the attorney's department is the power company will tell us where it goes, and we need to comply with that. The arrangement of the borough.
I noted, and I think this is... I noted that there were some designations for monitoring wells inside the lower level. At least they were marked that way. Do we still have access to those? Know anything about those?
I do not. I do not believe that there are monitoring wells on the property.
I'll show you where they are. I mean, you gave me the... You gave me this... The...
Existence condition survey?
The key.
So, there's a standard legend on our survey or plans that says monitoring well?
Yeah.
But those aren't necessarily monitoring wells on the property?
Then they're on your plan. I mean, if you're telling me no, you and I can talk about it afterwards. All I'm interested in is...
Whatever your preference is, is it...
I just want access to those to make sure that we can do them.
I don't know what you're looking at, so I can't testify what you're looking at. But what I can say is that I have no knowledge of monitoring wells on the property, based on the survey that...
Well, I won't take up the time to do that this morning. I'll show you those afterwards. If there are monitoring wells on the site, how do you access them? Or how do you get access to them?
Quite hypothetical, but certainly we would work with whoever the LSRP is and practice those, and make sure that they're coordinated with the instructor. Wouldn't be the first time that we've...
All right.
Yeah, can I just say that there are no monitoring wells?
Then maybe the map is incorrect.
Well, no, if the map is correct, it's just a legend that has fifty other symbols, right?
Have you seen a symbol on the map?
Right, but it's not... That symbol is not on the actual survey.
Okay.
It's on a legend, and there's maybe twenty other symbols that are not also on the survey. It's just, you know...
I'm with you.
Just to make that clarification.
Not my first one. I'm struggling with your C two criteria for your sign. You testified as positive and negative, but the C two criteria is somewhat different in regard to that. The testimony that I didn't hear was how this sign benefits either the community or is a better sign designed than what we have in your cap twenty. I haven't heard that. I mean, I saw it, but clearly, you're not going for the C one. It's not... Right? And the C two says that the grant approval must actually benefit the community. In that, it represents a better zoning alternative for the property. The focus of the C two case then would be the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for an improved zoning plan that will benefit the community. And in this instance, what we did here in branding, as far as branding goes, that benefits you. This is not a commercial facility where someone, say, like a war fever pavilion, "I don't know where I'm going, I'm looking for that sign to get there." I, you know...
I don't think I put that out as a positive criteria. I don't necessarily disagree, we were not here for commercial purposes. And what I testified...
I would have followed that the facility that's also a higher, bigger, larger residential facility to the south of your facility, I don't even think you see the signage. So, I'm just trying to get you to focus on, on the proofs for the C two for the signage, as to how that is an improved alternative than what the twenty... Twenty square feet cap would be?
Yeah, that's twenty square feet.
So, I'm just looking for those proofs. And for a purely self-trait, at some point in time, I'm going to have to write this up.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. And I think a couple of things. Number one is, like, I did not suggest that this was a commercial use or commercial venture. I would tie this sort of compare this to any other applications before this board or any other development, and why they did or did not propose signage. What I did say is that it advances purpose, I have the useful land use law, which should promote desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and efficient design arrangement. And that is based upon the architectural design, which we saw on the plan, which, in my opinion, and in the architect's opinion, I believe, shows proper scale for that sign to the size of the building. The ordinance contemplates two different criteria. One is five percent of the side, well below that. The other is twenty square feet. So, because of, this is a block-to-block development, a little bit larger than some other properties in town, the twenty square feet scales differently than five percent. So, I believe that when you look at the five percent measure, and we're well below that, that it... That helps to offset any potential negative impacts of the development.
How does it benefit the community for that sign?
Can we pull that up again? The sign?
And you also have another one at the... There's two of them, correct? You have this one here at this elevation, and then you have one around the corner, which is south.
There are two correct. This one faces to the west toward Thirty-Five, so it's visible as you're coming south on Thirty-Five. The other one is on the south side, facing northbound traffic.
So, you can see that as you come into it.
So, the idea is that if you're traveling down on Thirty-Five, you can see the sign as far as... Slow your vehicle and hold to the property, right?
That's correct.
I think your testimony was that because of the scale of the building, the size of the sign is a better zoning alternative than what's contemplated under the ordinance, is correct?
Right. And visitors to the property need to know what the name of it is, for the vermejo song.
Does the sign have to be backlit?
Yeah, but I missed that whole...
Does the sign have to be backlit? The other question I'm going to ask real quick is, in all of your materials, the brand of the building is completely different. And it's the Mediterranean in some materials, it's vermelham or in some materials, it's vermelha Belmar in some materials, and it's verella in some materials. Can we get some consistency? What is the...
It started off as the Mediterranean, when it was a Mediterranean theme originally, claiming true, like tile.
Fits ingredient.
And then we hit back on that, and this is where we are. It is...
Which roughly translates to the red. Red. I don't know if any...
Yes, it's started with Portuguese vermejo. It's bred in Portuguese, and then that's how the marketing sort of evolved.
I don't think any reason actually would have under a condition that I have. But I'll let you guys do that any time. But we could just get some consistency for that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we will hire, you know, a branding firm to then develop the name. At this point, I think everyone's taking liberties to, you know, create a name for the project. We'll have some consistency in that.
Yeah, just something that fits the, again, along the side to fit.
Should the brand...
So, the question is, this size, they're each a hundred square feet, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I think your testimony was that the five percent factor would have landed somewhere about a hundred and fifty square feet for that elevation. Your cap to twenty, based on the requirements. So, the question is, is there any relief you can provide to bring a hundred square feet down? And that may be more for the owner.
Would the board... So, the question is, would the board instead like to see, like, a nice monument sign on that center island, more at high level? Maybe, you know, I should try... Yeah, like, in that general area with some nice landscaping. Instead of, let's say, maybe we could create a feature here or make the signage smaller, but from a, you know, would the board maybe like to see something more along those lines of a monument sign, like the entry through development?
I would...
Instead of having that larger...
Although I do like, especially if that becomes like a brighter blue as an accent feature.
Yeah, I mean, we could incorporate...
Yeah, I like the feature itself, but it doesn't... But if there were a monument sign, I think everyone's going to know the building. I don't think we need to necessarily have it broadcast as big as it's shown in the signage renderings.
So, we could do maybe like a nice sliding element along that ban, but not necessarily express it with our...
Or logo.
Or maybe we could do the star verse, only the star verse, and then we do a nice monument sign.
But I think it would certainly go a long way, rather than having this and the one further south.
The one further south, not as valuable as something here in this area. I think, you know, we could probably, you know, take a look at that one as well. Maybe make it more like an architectural...
Yeah, I think that would go a long way.
No, I'm just trying to keep public condition.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we're... Are we going to need a variance in monument sign or not?
Possibly.
Yeah, it depends on the size.
Depends on the size, yeah.
Yeah, it depends on the size. But I mean, the thing...
I'm assuming it's going to be somewhat of a modest monument sign of some sort there, to tie in with the landscaping, so... But I think when you're coming back in, unfortunately, you're going to have to with some of the other elevation elements. I think that may be something you just give us a quick view of. All right?
That's all I have. I'm sorry, now, can you briefly discuss Exhibit I in your... I'm sorry, now, can you briefly discuss exhibit I in your, well, your schedule? One of the things that the board had a turn about during the process, during this process, was the staging and the scheduling. I know you've got amazing things, you give us an idea of the timetable right now. Schedule I says, you execute the agreement within eighteen months after, Redeveloper pays all government approvals required for commencement of construction within eighteen months after the effective date. And it says, Redeveloper closes on financing within twenty-four months after the effective date. Commencement of construction within thirty months. Are we still on that timetable?
It's not like a resounding yes.
What are we using as the effective date?
If we get the final approval, every time that the, 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 our financing lets, the whole project is expeditions as possible.
So can we run through what approvals are still out there that you're working on? I mean, certainly, there are D E P, there are D O T.
Yeah, I did a number of them, they haven't submitted a package to the town. I'm going to, in the process of the, of the, of the, of the-
Sure. So run down the list. So, Real soil conservation district, we have a pending application we've submitted, we've addressed some comments. I expect that within probably thirty, forty minutes. County planning board issued a low interest back in April. Water and sewer, we go through locally to get signed all on to the T W A, the T W F C, I believe that's what we're converting right now. Then that will go to South Palm and Regional Sewer Authority, they've actually already approved it on six eleven twenty-five, so that's good from the sewer authority, and then ultimately the T W A, which is a, you know, some game process after Belmar approving the signs off on the applications. D E P, we have our flood hazard and caper permits, they got mentioned in my direct testimony. We had a initial permit for the last iteration of plans, we have a minor modification or modification of that permit, and it's pending with D E P now. We've been back and forth with some comments, I expect that will be wrapped up in the next month or so. And then there's the various speedovers, gas, J C P and L, and N G B O T, right? So N G B O T, Mr. Rusi testified, that is in process, minor review comments being addressed, we expect that to happen so as well.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Comments? All right. So we'll come back, I'm not sure whether the applicant needs to bring all their experts' pack, we talked a little bit about that, but it sounds like we're gonna be revisiting architecture for sure, and there may be some engineering questions that come out as well, but likely mostly architecture at the next meeting. So I don't think we're gonna go through landscaping, traffic, planning, so I think that's probably where the experts will fall in terms of our next meeting. Engineer planning, do you agree with that, or is there someone else who feels dubious?
Chairman, I'm in agreement with what you just said, George. The answer is yes.
Okay. All right, so I'm not sure what the next meeting is, April, whether we have anybody on the agenda.
It's obviously eighteen. Some administrative things to do with the Belmar application.
Does that work for the applicant?
It works for me, it works for the team, August eighteenth.
Probably a way, but.
Lance, is that good for you?
We have time, ladies?
Yeah, we made time for the board to act under the, on the U L, and we just asked that for the, 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 for the reserve and the public.
If anyone wants to come back from the public, we gave you the opportunity to speak tonight, you'll certainly have the opportunity to speak again at our next meeting, should you wish to. All right?
Just to be clear, there won't be individual numbers sent out to anyone. Obviously, they will be noticed on our website of the meeting. The applicant is gonna be coming back on August eighteenth.
All right, can I have a motion to close this meeting?
We still, we still have a public session on any of that.
Okay, excuse me.
It's closed this.
So anyone would like to make a comment about anything other than this application, anything, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address. Seeing no one up close, the public portion, thank you for that reminder, Doug. And I'll ask for a motion to close. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a second, second? Thank you.